And if you do roll calls.
A Chairman Lutens.
Here.
Commissioner Petty.
Here.
Commissioner Rock is absent, Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Milkby is absent, Commissioner Fogg is absent, and Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
I have a court.
Court. All right, just wanted to double check that all the notices were correctly posted, if needed.
They were, yes.
Okay, I'd like to remind the commissioners, if you've had any ex parte communications or any conflicts of interest with any of the applications, please let us know at the time of that application. And with that, we'll go down to the review and approval of the January twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions, corrections, or assessments on any of the minutes?
Move approval, approval of the minutes is written.
Yeah, motion in a second.
Bye. Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Right, and it's approved. Hey, the first item was changed on the preliminary development plan review, so we'll go to the second item. We have the pre-application for twenty twenty five oh three at five hundred First Street. The Trails Edge Town Home. We have, believe, Alan Cottle. Alan, if you'd like to come up and let us know your plans.
Hi. My name is Alan Cottle. I live in Utah, and I think this is kind of round two for me on this.
If we can have your street address, please.
Oh, the street address of my home.
Or your mailing address, like.
Yeah, it is seven two six South Woodmore Circle. Fountainfall, Utah, eight four zero one zero. Anything else? Okay. So, this is kind of around two. I feel like we kind of wasted a lot of people's time and a year and a half of our time and money. When I came up and bought this property, my wife and I years ago, thirty five years ago, came through McCall after we were newly married, fell in love with this city, so much we thought of living here down by Park City, Utah, and we ended up there because it's where her family was from, so that was the tug. We liked it so much, we named our second daughter is McCall. And I've looked for pieces for years here to do a little development. I develop and we build our own housing. This six acres came up and we bought it, and so I asked around for the people who helped sell it to us, give us a local team, and they gave us some engineers and some other people. And honestly, don't feel we were very well represented with that, nor was the city in McCall. It was kind of just a high-density kind of deal. We hired some other architects that work in Park City, or they work in Tahoe, again, more of the same. So after after about November, October, whenever it was, December, that we were voted down to go back to P and Z and make some more changes. I took a hard look at the plan, didn't like it at all, and I was able to talk with some of the staff here. We had a, the day after Christmas, we had a wonderful conversation, and they said, could we suggest you get some local help? Could we suggest you be a lot more sensitive to the site? And I said, I love everything you're talking about. And Meredith had a lot of input on kind of making some suggestions, because I don't think our people were listening. So we pretty much fired everybody else on the old team. And I became acquainted with Wayne at Epicost Design here, and we hit it off and just said, look, why don't you guys do what you want to do on this? Would, talk to the talk to staff, talk to a lot of people, tell me what comes back, and let's run with that. So anyway, I, and the biggest mistake I made before is I was hearing, well, you're not really needed here, you shouldn't come up, and I'm always used, I used to be a vice president of Hyatt, and we did a lot of resorts, and we were a lot of very sensitive areas all around, really, the world. And I'd go to every meeting, and I would just stand there, and so I just said, not again, and so today I had meetings up until nine thirty in Salt Lake, got in my truck and drove up here. I'm here for this meeting, and I have a meeting at eight AM in Salt Lake tomorrow, so I'm going to drive back after the meeting. But this, there's nothing more important in my world than meeting you and, you know, letting you, you probably, all of you know Wayne, but letting you see some of the differences, and for me, they're monumental. The way the approach is, there's a lot more space between, a lot more trees, beautiful cathedral, grove of trees in the center. Just a lot of cool things that have come about, and we have smaller units that I kind of like. They were getting too big with these world-class architects. We're going to use local, Wayne and his crew, they've designed them so for us. So, anyway, that's, that's me. So I'm going to turn time over to Wayne, I guess, to introduce the project. Thanks.
Yeah, just share maybe the screen. Yeah, so Wayne Rumley, Epicost Design, here in McCall, three oh three Colorado Street for the office. One thousand and eight Bitterroot Drive for my personal. The, the property, you, you just heard from Alan, the property owner, I know, I, I'm sure when you saw this, this first outline, you're like, okay, this property again, this is where we were, right, a, a year ago. And I think and again, this, I know this isn't a full presentation or anything like that, I just did want to give you a little history. Just like, just like Alan mentioned, we, he kind of gave us carte blanche, and first thing we did, obviously, we'd been, we'd followed along for the last year and a half, you know, since we're just down the street, our office is down the street, we got some notifications and all this kind of stuff. We were certainly a little hesitant to get involved or to, you know, just understand. So first thing we did, obviously, we listened to all the old meetings. We, you know, heard all your comments from the previous design. We heard, you know, city council's comments as well, since, you know, it went all the way through to the council. Next thing we did, we went out and we walked that site, even, even though we're, we're familiar with it, you know, certainly different to walk it with a, with an eye towards, you know, design and and construction and architecture and all of that, rather than just, you know, cutting through from the high school to Colorado Street kind of a thing. So we, yeah, we reviewed the trees that Kurt had marked. Emily, from my office, who, you know, you guys have all met Emily before. Emily and Kurt worked very closely on lots of projects around town, and so the first thing we did was walk the trees, look at the good, better, best that Kurt identified. We, of course, considered the neighbors in, in the design and the fact that, you know, all the neighboring homes are one and maybe a few two-story homes. And so that started informing us. You know, we, we walked that trail, of course, multiple times. You know, the bike path, and again, this time with a, with an eye towards what, what could, what could fit here, what's appropriate here. And again, taking your input on all the snow storage and the space between buildings and roads and, and the, and the topography. So, anyway, long story short, we ended up identifying these buildable locations. We, again, we turned everything off from the old CAD file, the old road alignment, the old buildings, all we kept were the trees. And what started to shake out after we walked it and looked at it multiple times, we are proposing forty-two units. We, we identified nineteen kind of buildable areas that are not on the steep part, not, yeah, not on the steep part, they're away from the trees, they've they fit between the trees that Kurt and Emily had identified. It also allowed us to really keep that center crown of that hillside as open space. So what you see on the rendering there, the dark green is completely untouched. Those, those huge majestic ponderosas at the top of the hill there that you can see as you're coming down Colorado, those are untouched. All the area down at the bottom of the screen as well is untouched. And we stretched the roadway out, we looked for flat areas to locate the homes, we we shrunk the homes, as Alan mentioned, in order to create more areas for snow storage between the homes. We didn't end up with big, long five and six plexes, you know, townhomes, but three is the most we have, three side by side. That allows us to step with the grade. It also allows us to make the units a little more affordable. Smaller units are obviously a little more, less expensive to build, and they'll be a little more affordable in the long run, too. So, again, just want to let you know that we, we listened to, you know, to all the previous meetings. Brought our kind of local knowledge from living and, and working just down the street. Again, trying to be, you know, develop a, a building or an architecture that is more sensitive, I would say. In fact, you can go to some of the three D sites, three D views, where we've started to rough in, you know, roof lines and massing and and we have two-story homes along the sides and along the pathway. The three-story homes, which are necessary, you know, when you squeeze the footprint, you're going to get a little taller. Those are, those are tucked into the inside of the property as much as we could, much as we can so far. Again, we've listened certainly to stormwater, your concerns about snow storage, stormwater, all of that. And so I believe we've got good, good space, you know, we're already planning for the runoff and, and again, snow storage. Open space pathways. You know, that lar, the, the primary pathway through the middle of the site, Alan, we've already talked about, that will be a paved pathway, open year-round, that's really kind of a major connector, you know, my office is just off the screen to the right, and there's kids walking that every day, right, so we want to keep that open. Yeah, try to, try to make something that, that fits in. In fact, that was, that was actually one of, one of Alan's comments, the very first time we met, and we were doing our listening and our due diligence, he said, I just want a project that is going to feel like in a hundred years, it belongs here. You know, and I don't think he was getting that the first time around. Definitely listen to any input you have. Okay, great, thank you. Thanks. Commissioner, any question? I'm assuming the pathways you show going through it are public access through. Public pathways. Oh, one thing I forgot to mention, so the, the pathway through the center is, I think that's shown right now, is eight feet wide paved pathway that'll be maintained year-round. The other pathways, at the bottom of the page, there's also one at the top of the property, at the north end of the property. And there, we're actually going to add even a third one in the middle, those would be more like natural surface, more like a, a trail, trail. You know, dog walking kind of a trail, and those probably won't be open during the winter, but open for public access. So every, every home has direct access to a trail in this concept. Anticipate doing any homes as far as workforce housing, deed restriction, anything? Yeah, workforce housing and deed restriction, and Alan, you can jump in too, but I think you were working on some numbers and all of that.
Yeah, so we plan right now to do probably around six for the workforce housing out of the forty-two. And then on deed restrictions, I plan on having a home and somewhat retiring here in just a year or two, when we can get these in and get them built, so it's going to be fairly highly restricted. We have some people that want to do some rentals of express interest, there's kind of a short list growing longer now, especially with the plan. But I don't know, it's got to be highly restricted. We haven't flushed that out yet, but we will. When we come back, we'll flush it out, but there'll be a good chunk of some workforce housing, and we actually talked to some local businesses about it, they can't, they just one of them talked to me, I was buying an ice cream cone at my father's place, is that it? And she came and sat down with us last summer, my wife and I, she said, I can't get, I think it's I thirty-five visas because I can't identify housing for our people here, and I need workers, our business is busy. And so we were talking about what that means, so that's one of the reasons, take some of the unit sizes down, before they were just getting too big, they'd be way too costly for somebody to buy and then be able to have some workforce housing there. Or somebody that would, wants to stay and live here to be able to have an entry point into here. So, we're going to be more sensitive to that, but right now, we have, before the number was six, that we were talking, that came back, and we talked with Brian before as a planner, and so we're going to still provide that. As far as deed restrictions, we haven't got into it yet, the last time through, we had part of it that way and part of it not. I'm not so sure how that works legally, we've, we have engaged a local land use lawyer to help us draft that language and everything and see what can work on that, but it'll be something that, hopefully, that's fully acceptable to everybody. It is being considered.
In the, in the upper right-hand corner, you have that one straight pathway that goes basically north, is that going to be year-round?
Yeah, so that driveway.
Is, was that, that's a driveway?
Oh, the sidewalk one?
Oh, the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be maintained by probably the HOA, I would imagine, has to maintain that one. That's going to be part of the road right away. Really, we're having to dedicate and give a lot of that road, so that road, and we're, like, we talked before and agreed to be widening that as part of this plot.
Damn.
Okay.
One item that, one consultant that we are going to work with is the original engineer, and we'll guide him, but you know, all the engineering that was done down First Street, that swale and all that, that's the same as what you saw previously with the, the swale and the widening of the road and all of that, so.
And that's First Street on the right-hand side of that driveway?
First Street is the right-hand side, and Colorado is the one that comes in from the middle of the right-hand side.
Name's on them, so sometimes I don't know where I am. A lot of times I don't know where I am.
Yeah. Baseball diamond or softball is up there on the left side, you know.
Are they all be like the same siding and, and design, or are you going to mix it up, and so it doesn't look like Meridian?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're definitely similar. Right now, they all are basically the same. Right now, they're the same, because I'm really just kind of looking at volumes and masses and, and all of that thing, but no, we'll, we'll definitely mix them up. You know, but we haven't gotten into that level of, of, you know, just what colors and materials and all that. Certainly, for a, you know, a kind of a townhome project will be, you know, having an eye towards maintenance as well and long-term, so I'm, I would imagine there'll be some, you know, whether it's hardy or you know, there's so many great new materials coming out that it's not, so you don't have to stain your house every five years and this.
You said that you just walked around and looked for places that you're going to build the, three, three units and the two units and the double decker ones. What kind of criteria do you use for that, or just look and see what works for you and?
Well, what we did, what we did, like I say, we started with survey that the previous engineers developed, and we had Kurt's tree marking, so Kurt provided a list of, you know, a plan, a site plan, basically, with all the trees circled, kind of good, better, best. And so that starts already identifying like no-go areas, right, and, you know, and when, of course, then when you go up on site, you see that, you know, these trees are, you know, thirty-foot diameter ponderosa pines, you know, that are a couple hundred years old, and so, so we, we kind of took our offsets off that, and then the other part of the site is, parts of, some parts of the site are just too steep to build. So there's another kind of a no-go area. And so really, we kind of start carving off, like, this is a no-go area, this is a no-go area, and then you have a few areas start coming up where you say, okay, here's, here's a little zone that's relatively flat, relatively buildable, and it's maybe you know, seventy feet wide, let's say, between Kurt's tree on the left and another tree on the right, and so, so that's kind of how we started, is like by where can we, where should we not build, you know, let's, and so then that starts determining how how, what size our buildings should be, so we really squeezed those buildings down from before. Where before, they just came in and said, well, we want to do, you know, thirty feet on this side and thirty feet on that side, there's a ninety-foot building. There aren't very many ninety-foot wide openings on that property when you really start walking around. Kind of start setting up, like I said, these determinants, more like no-build areas, see what's left open.
One of the things, too, the other plan, I think engineers came in, kind of mowed over some of the hill, then made some really big paths for big five plexes and, and, and Meredith showed me a plan that actually was fully approved in oh seven, and then recession hit, wiped it out, but they had some ten plexes on that one, and I started with that, saying, well, that got approved, Wayne, what do you think? And he came back, we're just not going to do that. We're not going to just do that anymore, he said, I, I don't want to do that. I said, do what you want then. So they went, basically put snowshoes on and, and spend a day there doing this. But the end result, the first one had so much retaining. We had retaining walls everywhere on it. This one has no retaining, except for a little bit to save a, a big tree. So they retain twenty feet away from this tree, just so they can keep it untouched. That's the only retaining. And they've gotten to that because they've made the unit smaller, they step them back, and they can step them, because the pads are smaller, and there's open space where they can step them down the hill as the road comes in. The units come, they're not like mowing big pads that have a lot of retaining to hold a flat pad, it's completely different approach. So the retaining has gone from this plat, it's really just, and then if they do need to set one into a hill, they increase the back of the foundation, and that becomes the retaining wall. And so they can use that where garages or whatever will sit, and so you can just see, this thing will feel so much more natural, because it will be natural. It's just going to be cut just to build, put it in without tons of like reshaping this thing at all.
One, one major change, there is, should be one image from the bike path. You know, there was like a eight-foot-tall retaining wall above the bike path to the previous design's ground floor. And so as you're walking along there, you're like, oh my God, here's, I'm looking at somebody's feet, maybe, you know, if that. And then you've got your building on top of that, whereas we looked at the topography and we said, this makes a perfect downhill unit, right? You enter into your home stairs down, and now you're on grade, so just, I don't know, honestly, it's just kind of simple.
Are you, you're going to keep your in lieu of for Parks and Rec?
We, actually, that's one of the things we were trying to set up, is to come to Parks and Rec and present this. I, I need to review what was set up last time and all of that, so I don't know.
Hundred and thirty thousand, right, Alan?
Yeah, I, I think the idea here is, and, and this will be a probably offline discussion with Parks and Rec on what they want to do. Can obviously write a check, but in this plan, it's just giving a whole bunch of the land, this whole corner as a park. And then we understand, well, maybe they don't want that anymore, maybe they want to check it, so we just need to have a discussion, which way should we proceed?
The southeast corner?
The southeast, that whole thing, yeah, down, down there.
I get, I think I remember that was pretty swampy from the last conversations, but yep, you can talk to Kurt.
It's a hillside and, yeah, and then, you know, it, it's a great sledding hill right now. Into somebody's backyard, and then it levels off, but yeah, we would, you know, want to discuss, I think that primary, we did meet with Kurt already, and he certainly sees the value of the primary pathway connecting through there. But again, I wasn't part of that previous discussion, and so we're trying to get, and we need to get Emily and Kurt and to, and then we can present again, so.
We're open, is what I'm saying.
It'd be helpful for this to visit crack before you all review it. I know we, the hospital kind of in reverse the hospital housing timeline that they were pursuing. But this would be a good space to say, I want to see this after crack or if you don't land it.
I think it'd be good to have them talking to the parks first.
You know. What are these big blocks here?
Which big blocks?
The big gray blocks that are on the left-hand side. We're not in the same picture, I don't think.
Oh, those are the, those big gray blocks represent the neighboring development that we don't have, I don't have a CAD model for theirs, so, so we're just putting in the, the.
Well, they're very attractive looking, I just wondered.
Okay, and then there's the high school in back, which is actually probably pretty accurate. Yeah, so those are just placeholders for what the neighbor is doing. Yeah, and these trees that you see on one of those are surveyed. Those are the accurate tree locations, this is not just, you know, fictional stuff. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, any other questions? Okay, thanks. Looks better than the last one, I would say.
By quite a bit?
Okay. And we move on to the next item, pre-application twenty-five oh four, to be determined, Woolley Avenue, the Hill subdivisions. Sure who we have here for that?
You, Jill and Richard Hill, and they're online.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, you can hear, excellent. Hi there. Yeah, my name's Gillian Hill, and my husband, Richard, has just come on as well, so hopefully you can see him. We Yep, we live in Boise, our address is six three six North Morning Sideway in Boise, eight three seven one two is our zip code. And this is the plot that we bought, it's about five point five acres next to Woolley Avenue, currently under the Spring Mountain Ranch each way. Our proposal is to split this into five lots. And obviously, it's zoned for our four, so I mean, we, we could have substantially more lots than that on the property, but there's a number of reasons why that just doesn't really work for the site. The first one is, is just, it's quite complex kind of geographically, so on the southeast area, I think you can see on that plan, there's a large area of wetlands. And then that, what looks sort of like a road that crosses the site is a sewer easement. So nothing south of the sewer easement can be built on. And then the other thing is that along Woolley Avenue, it's a very steep gradient into the property. And there's also a lot of natural features, which we personally would keep as many of as we could, a lot of very large rocks and boulders, and it's very heavily wooded. So, I don't think we would ever have been able to maximize the number of plots on there to what our four is zoned for. The other thing is that the sewer district have a maximum of five hookups for this parcel of land, so five plots from what we can understand is the most that can be built there. We are not property developers, we've bought this because we would like a piece of land here to build for ourselves. Five plots is the perfect amount for us, basically, to fund building here for our own property, so we're quite happy at that to, to take that maximum that the sewer district suggests for the sewer hookups. We had a neighborhood meeting last Friday, and about twenty to twenty-five people came, both in person, and we held it on Zoom. And it was really useful to hear what the neighbors had to say and what their concerns were about the site, what they were interested in. I think it was mostly things that we already had been thinking about ourselves, as we imagine building on the land. So that's things like the natural features, the wildlife that's on the property. How we would take access is obviously a big one, how we would deal with snow removal, a lot of those kind of standard issues that we'd already been considering. One of the things that the neighbors brought up that we hadn't considered personally, but now we're really thinking about is that they tell us that there's a few properties that have been built recently in the neighborhood where the size of the property has been really, or the size of the building has been really maximized. And that allows for very large Airbnbs. Where the people who come is not a family coming to stay in it, or two families, but it's like large groups of people which can cause noise issues in what is basically a kind of family neighborhood. Also involves a lot of vehicles usually, far more vehicles than you would imagine, because it's for every one to two person that's there. And that's definitely something as, because we want to live on the land, that would concern us too, so we're considering a restrictive covenant, possibly maximizing the square footage. Our hope would be that these would plots would be built out as single-family homes. So we would give some leeway on what that size was, but really with the intention that they would be single-family homes. Access has always been kind of like one of the big issues with this piece of land. In an ideal world, we would take access of Chipshot Drive, which is to the north, it's the smaller smaller road, and it has a lower miles per hour speed limit. But unfortunately, that's private and owned by an HOA, and we've already spoken to them, and they are not willing to give us access of Chipshot Drive. We have, we do have access of Hearthstone Court, right where the edge of the sewer easement comes out. So our proposal is to take access to one plot from there, and then to split the accesses, another two in the middle of Woolley Avenue, just where the sewer easement comes out. If you walk the site, which we've done a lot, that, that's probably the easiest place in terms of visibility to get access to the roads. And then another two at Woolley Avenue, right where the stop sign for Chipshot Drive. What happens there is that there's, what we understand is that Chipshot Drive is, is straight, the private part. What happens there is that there's, what we understand is that Chipshot Drive is, is straight, the private part. And as it turns into the bend, it becomes the public street that is Woolley Avenue. So we would propose to take access sort of as close to the edge of the private drive, private road as we could. Our thinking on that is it limits the number of vehicles coming in and out, in and out of any one access point on Woolley Avenue, which we know is, you know, a relatively busy street. And it limits how many driveways and roads we would have to put into the property itself, therefore limiting how much we have to take out of, of the natural features. At that narrow point, right where the sewer easement starts, you can actually see from Woolley Avenue through to Chipshot Lane. It's, it's that, at that narrowest point there, it would be very hard to have an additional road within the property without taking up almost all of the wood. So our feeling is much as we would love to take access of Chipshot Drive and while that's not available, splitting the accesses up around Woolley Avenue and Hearthstone Court is probably the best option that, that we can come up with. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is in the, to the far west of the property, right where Chipshot Drive meets Woolley Avenue, there is a large kind of wooden feature that's like a spring mountain ranch signage. I understand it's called an entry feature. And there is some sort of, it, it's not on the title to our piece of land, I don't believe, but there is some kind of issue with how that gets dealt with. So I've already requested the documents for like the Spring Mountain Ranch master plan. We're going to look into seeing if we can understand what the requirements are for that, what we could possibly do about moving it. We've, we've already been in touch, not about this specifically, but in general with the Spring Mountain Ranch HOA. And so I'm, we've, we've gotten well with them when we've spoken up till now. So I'm hoping that whatever needs to be done in regard to that, we could probably come up with an arrangement. And that's probably all I have to say about the land, but we'd be happy to take any questions. As I mentioned, we're not developers. We have hired crestline engineers to help us. They, they are the people who put together this plan for us. And they've done quite a lot of work for us on site, but certainly if there are any questions or issues you want to raise, we would be happy to listen to them and think about them.
Commissioners, any questions for Gil?
The driveway up Woolley, that's, that whole hillside is pretty steep, but.
Yeah, so it, it, I, I can jump in here, Joe. So at that point between plots three and four, there's a natural kind of dip in the land. And you can see that the contours are relatively sparsely spaced there. I think it'd be possible to adhere to the less than 10% grade by following those contours up and around into three and four at that point.
What is that, a cart path that goes along Woolley Drive that kind of meanders through the whole piece of property? Or is that a pathway or?
No, it's an easement.
Just an easement, okay.
And sewer actually goes there.
It's a sewer easement, yeah. The straight line, is that, is that what you're referring to, the, the straight line with a bend in it?
Was looking at the one at the bottom of, of the rendering here. Kind of goes, and then it reaches a, looks like a little stump there and then it continues on through the property. That's, that's all sewer rendering or sewer lines.
I think that's just a setback from the road.
Yeah, I think when it curves and follows Woolley Avenue, that's just a setback from the road where the boundary line is. And then when it goes straight over to the northeast, that's where it becomes the sewer easement.
Oh. And the one on the top that goes right along Chipshot, Chipshot Drive, that's the sewer easement to the.
No, that's just a setback. It's just a setback marked on this all the way around, like, all the way around the, the property. It's not, it's not a pathway.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for that? Okay, well, thank you, Yellen. Richard, I think just continue working with staff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, move on to the consent agenda and we have something a little different here.
You have nothing on your consent agenda, which is different.
Okay, I'm sure it was something we missed on the tour, so, okay, there's nothing on the consent agenda.
Findings and conclusions.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the old business. First item is design review twenty four twenty eight, scenic route twenty four eleven. This is a public hearing. Remember if we kept that open or if I need to open it again?
Open it for the evening, just, just for goodness sake, but you did continue it to this.
Continue, I think we kept it open. Anyway, make a motion, we open the public hearing design?
Exactly.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? You opposed? Right. And you have Jeff Hatch here?
Abby Jermaine. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Abby Jermaine with Ehlmann Burke, two five one East Front Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Kami Chanis, Mike Keller and Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. As a reminder to the commission, we are requesting approval of the SR and DR applications. This project already received approval on the CUP and PUD aspects of this project from the Board of County Commissioners. So we are here in front of this commission strictly on the scenic route and the design review aspects. Going back to our last hearing, this is actually our third hearing in front of the commission on these applications. If you will recall, we have actually been in front of this commission and on this project for a couple of years now. We have made many reiterations of the design and the project layout. And now we are here for the third hearing on this specific design of the project. Going back to our last hearing on March fourth, there were three main requests from this commission. The first one was to provide more specifics on the fencing of this project. We, and specifically an exhibit that illustrated this. Meredith, do you have the presentation by chance? What we did in hearing that comment is we went back and provided some depictions of the fencing. The engineered fence on the north boundary will be there to prevent snow trespass. That fence will use colors and materials similar to the building. And the remaining perimeter fence will utilize a wood look textured vinyl fence. There's also the security gates along the street facade, which are going to be wrought iron. So those are depicted on this slide for you here. I'll also remind the commission that there are the structural calculations within the packet as well. There were questions about ensuring that the fences were engineered to retain the snow. And so those, those are included in the packet and have been provided to the commission. The next item that the commission was interested in seeing more information on was a rendering showing the site without landscaping. In looking at this request, we did provide additional renderings and those are, yep, thank you, Meredith. Those are including landscaping that will be installed at construction. So it would be inaccurate and incorrect to provide a rendering with no landscaping. Because anytime, at the point in which the construction occurs, there will be landscaping on this project. So we have heard the commission's request to see more of a immediate rendering of what this will look like as soon as construction is built and that has been provided. Those are what the, that's what the landscaping will look at initially. And then obviously you've seen the other depictions of what it will be once those come to maturity. I think probably the commission's main focus of the March fourth hearing was related to a question of the setbacks and whether or not the buildings could be pushed farther from Sampson Trail away from the road. Specifically, the commission requested that we try and push those buildings ten to fifteen feet from the pathway. We heard that request and, and we attempted our, our best to move the buildings as much as we possibly could. Currently now, there is thirty-five feet, between thirty-five and thirty-seven feet from Sampson Trail Road from the edge of pavement. And there's fourteen to sixteen feet from the pedestrian pathway. So we have met that request of the commission to, to move that as much as possible. Preemptively addressing a question I, I think the commission may have, why can't you move it more? It is because of the site restrictions of this property. In order to meet the snow storage requirements, we cannot move the buildings any further west, which would be back away from Sampson Trail. The other two issues with this are the drive aisle constraints. We can't shrink those drive aisles anymore to adequately serve the use of this facility. And also there's the storm water and the septic aspects too. So we have moved the facilities back as much as possible, but there is no ability to move them any farther off the trail. I think the other reason that it's important to talk a little bit more about this specific aspect and question of the commission is because the commission seemed to find that most of the criteria for design review and scenic route had been met. But for, I would say, two, and those were related to McCall City Code three sixteen oh seven D and G. And that related to whether or not it would have negative impacts on the surrounding neighbors and whether or not the scenic aspects of, of the, the road had been considered and protected. The reason this consideration and those criteria are important is because those criteria meet the criteria or mirror the criteria of the CUP. In making the findings, in the board making the findings that the CUP and PUD had met the conditions required for approving a CUP, they had to make a certain finding as it related to impacts on the neighborhood and also scenic perspectives as well. Specifically, the the Board of County Commissioners in addressing the CUP criteria stated that the board concludes that the application is not detrimental to the health, safety and general, general welfare of the public. Self-storage is a land use type specifically anticipated in the commercial zone and is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. In addition, in mirroring the conditions of the design review criteria, the board also stated that the proposed self-storage facility is unlikely to result in destruction, loss or damage of an important natural scenic or historic feature. The board made the findings that these applications met these standards and the commission cannot disturb those findings or modify them. I think why that is so important is because in listening to the commission's deliberations in March, it was really those criteria that provided some hesitation to the board, to the commission approving this project. I think the Board of County Commissioners anticipated that issue. And specifically in the findings of fact, the board stated, the land use requested in the original application for self-storage business is approved by this decision and shall not be disturbed or modified on remand. The project and the site plan that the board approved was the site plan that you have, all have been looking at. In fact, it did not include the additional setbacks that we've provided. So in looking at that site plan and in looking at the criteria to approve the CUP, including neighborhood impacts and scenic route impacts, the board found that this site plan did meet that criteria. Therefore, in the remand back to this planning and zoning commission, the instructions from the board was for that not to be disturbed or modified. The instructions to this commission was to look really at the aesthetics and the design aspects of this project. So I just provide that to the commission because I know that those were a couple of criteria that this commission was struggling with the last time in the hearing. Jeff is, is here and he can certainly provide more details on the additional information that we provided. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, any questions at this point?
We asked for an eight to ten feet move and you gave us four?
The, the, the setback from the pedestrian pathway is now fourteen to sixteen feet off the pedestrian pathway. It's thirty-five to thirty-seven feet off of the edge of.
Eight or ten.
I would have to defer to Jeff on, on that. Commissioners, just one other, I guess, request is, the last time we were in front of the commission, there was a lot of robust discussion and questions after the close of the public hearing. And I think unfortunately, we weren't able to provide some information that I think would have been helpful in the commission's decisions on this application. So I would encourage if the commission has questions, please present those to us now so that we can at least try and answer them or point you to the, the materials we've provided in order to address those tonight. I, I think that would be helpful too, so. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could reserve some time for rebuttal at the close of public comment, thank you.
Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture, address is two hundred West Thirty-Sixth Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one four. Good evening, Chairman Lyons and Commissioners. Thank you again for your consideration of our design review and scenic byway applications this evening. Uh, I think Abby did a pretty good job kind of recapping the criteria as far as what we have. I do have a presentation, but could really stand for questions unless you want me to run through that.
One good question I saw in your comment, how far is the entrance gate off the road? Or to allow for vehicles to be off the road if they're stopped there waiting to enter code in?
There wasn't a exact distance declared from the highway district. Typically between forty and fifty feet is what is required from a fire department standpoint. So we can definitely achieve fifty feet. Right now it's depicted at around fifty feet. So that would be what any highway district would require.
But that, your, your, your drawings don't show it that far back currently, correct?
It's depicted at like forty-nine six, where I can adjust the gate configuration, be at fifty feet.
So forty-nine six less ten feet from where the access code pedestal will be?
The access code doesn't interfere with the gate.
No, but if somebody is in their vehicle and they want to punch an access code, they're not going to be right at the gate.
The hood of the vehicle is typically at the gate.
Okay.
And then you're, you set your key code about five to seven feet back in order for the driver to have the hood of the vehicle out towards the gate and be able to access that key code.
So you have a pickup truck and a forty-foot trailer that the trailer will be out in the road as the access code is being entered. It's the best of my calculation.
We did, we don't really have any, any spaces that would conveniently accommodate that length. If you had an RV that was forty feet, that would fit. And if you have a fire engine, it would fit.
Size of, you know, forty-eight, fifty feet, forty-five feet. So I'm assuming people will get as much in these storage units as they can. One never knows, correct? But the ability to do so would encourage that to happen.
Is this a picture of the main gate right here, in this one? Well, it's one that was.
It was that previously.
Yeah.
It was since. It showed the different fence, fencing types.
Yeah, it's kind of gives you an idea what the main gate is, is if that's what that is. Or is that a auxiliary gate or number three on, on? Yeah. Okay, yeah. So you pull up there and put your access code into the left and go in and enter. Is there, is there, how far is this from the main roads? I think that was what, what the question was, forty feet?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
And that's what's traditionally required by fire departments and highway departments.
So I have a question on the rendering, renderings. The, it appears that the building is that down. As I, it's, so think through this with me. So the, the pathway and then, and then it kind of rolls down into the building and then there's vegetation and whatnot. Is that correct? Is that how that's? How this, this is what it looks like to me, so.
Commissioner Thompson, the trail itself has a bit of a crown to it. And then from the landscaping, we, we make kind of a, a soft swale. And so it would be slightly higher at the trail, slightly higher at the building and then slightly lower between those two points.
Okay.
That also helps kind of naturally water the, the plants as well.
One more question about the, the front gate, is that pedestrian entrance to the left of, right where the access key box is, is that what that is? Is that a pedestrian entrance? Or is that just part of the fence?
Commissioner Moss, currently that is just part of the fence. If the commission. Commissioner Moss, currently that is just part of the fence. If the commission would like a pedestrian gate access, we could certainly provide one.
I don't know. Do you really need one or not in your experience then? Okay.
Yes, I'm concerned Meredith Page 71. This drawing shows the building foundation quite a bit below the pathway. You still have groundwater issues that you may have to add floor in there. That's going to bring that building up to four feet.
I believe our civil engineer is on the line if we have any questions in regards to civil. I think they'd probably be best addressed by her. Corinne. Corinne, can you hear us?
All right, can you? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Corinne, I'm concerned the the buildings along Sampson Trails are shown four to six feet below road grade. But there's been a lot of discussion about water table. And if you have to raise those buildings, what whatever your engineering decides, then that is that's more of the building that will be visible on the scenic route.
Yeah, that makes sense. So we would have there be a retaining wall as part of the foundation system along the back of that building. And as part of that retaining wall design, there's going to be a section of well-draining gravel behind that wall. And then at the bottom of the wall, there would be a perforated drain pipe that would collect any water that ends up behind that wall. And then as far as the site grading, where the building elevations are set right now, we'd be cutting into the hillside for that that building, as you mentioned. And then we'd be filling kind of the remaining, kind of the western part of the site to be able to elevate those buildings a little bit higher above the water table. So we'd be cutting in some areas and then raising in the other areas. But we we have a plan for the wall drainage behind that building and a way to direct that out so that it doesn't sit behind those buildings. And so I don't anticipate having to raise the buildings any further.
Not concerned about drainage as much for the buildings is how much higher the buildings will be than the rendering.
They should not, based on the data that we have, and we've been continuing to collect groundwater data through this this spring season, I don't anticipate having to raise those buildings any further.
Yes, question. I'm not sure if this staff or you, but noticed on the letter from Jeff McFadden on the Valley County Road that mentions dedication of the 35-foot right-of-way to property immediately adjacent West Lake Fork Road. Are we making a condition upon property in some other area? Was that an error?
I think that's probably an error in Jeff's comments, but the 35-foot right-of-way request is the same. We can get a clarified statement from him. I think that they are trying to keep up right now. The right-of-way is Nathan's much better at phrasing this than I am, but the property line is in the middle of the pavement at the moment. So we're trying to get an actual right-of-way that meets the necessary codes established. I have a condition related to right of way dedication with a staff report. But I think it needs some some massaging through conversation between the Valley County Road Department so that, for example, we're not inventing a dedication in West Lake Fork at this time while someone else But we did have a meeting with Jeff McFadden on Monday where he said, oh, no, I still need to make sure we get the right-of-way dedication on this project. I see that it wasn't included clearly in the conditions for the PUD and conditional use permit. So we still need to formalize the frontage of this development within the county road system.
Would that right-of-way affect any of the pathway or the building setbacks?
I think it can to some extent. Nathan's looked at how would you configure the frontage? And it is more of an engineering problem.
I'm happy to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll maybe come back to that.
Yeah.
Get on with asking staff report. Okay, so that wouldn't sure which one would be better than.
Your question's pertinent. It's shown on the plans. I think the question is, are you still expecting dedicate threat? That was that was
Well, we have to make sure it's correct.
Commissioner Lyons, we did follow up with Mr. McFadden to confirm that he wasn't referring to Lake Fork. And he was, in fact, referring to Sampson Trail, which is where we established the 35-foot right-of-way reflected on the on the plan. So we feel like we're on the same page as far as what Mr. McFadden's intentions are with that letter, clarifying his approval.
Did he say anything about anything within that right-of-way? Does there anything that affects that? The extra rules the county has within their right-of-way? I don't think there is, but I'll make sure.
Other than what's outlined in that approval letter.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Great. There it is. We'll go to staff report.
Changes, I think Mr. Maine summarized that quite well. Last meeting, there was a request to move the buildings back from the scenic route. The numbers that I heard from the commission rates 10 feet, I believe some of them to the audience were 10, 15 feet. But what was presented based on what's feasible for the site was a move backwards about four feet. According to the future property line following a right-of-way dedication, that would originally have been a 20-foot setback last month to the frontage of one of the buildings would become a 24-foot setback in the re-presented materials. So I think I have that mentioned in the dimensional standards table in your staff report. There was the exhibit relating to the fencing details that would be in compliance with the policy's general development standards and impactary general development standards for fencing. We have in commercial zones allowed natural material mimicking type of texture to be used for fencing where it is appropriate by the commission. So a wood vinyl texture that looks like wood or mimics wood would be something that you do to make that experience. I think the note to add from staff's experience is vinyl fencing, when it gets snowing up against it, it does deteriorate over time. So just making sure that there's general maintenance clauses for making sure that it still looks nice as time goes by and snow does its thing would be helpful. Rock and fairly normal for these moving gated locking fences. Having that be seen through so that people can see a car approaching from the inside will be helpful to maintain some predictability either to the pedestrian or the particular environment. And then as Mr. Maine commented, they include young landscaping as it would look at the time of planting rather than no landscaping. So that shows the accurate representation of what the walls of the building should look like once those plantings go in. And findings like that are required prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for angry construction in the community. So it's fair argument that there will be a time period of construction where there are new saplings or plantings, but they don't get their final certificate until it's done, so. Other than that, I've tried to include as many of the appropriate conditions of approval as possible for you. I I have to say that I don't know at this point what further recommendations I could make at the staff level to send back for revision on this application. I think it's really up to your deliberations and how you think this lines up to the criteria applicable for the second year of the graphic review. And then in reference to those design review code sections D and G that Mr. Maine brought up relating to compatibility, I would just recommend Bill Nichols is on the line, but you are your own board with your own decision-making and deliberative powers. So you are allowed to make decisions based on the criteria you have before you, those including D and G, as this is supposed to be treated as a new fresh application and you have your own unique thoughts. So if you have a different decision than the Board of County Commissioners, you're allowed to have that different decision. But if you have the same decision, you're allowed to have that, too. With that, Nathan Stewart is here. He's our Public Works Director. As Morgan cited, smartly take a vacation somewhere warm this weekend. Unlike
Any questions for Meredith at this time?
This is area of impact. And so can the county commissioners then overrule this decision on design review and CD pro?
So this decision is technically a final decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but every applicant has the right to appeal. An appeal of any decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission that of either an affected neighbor or the applicant gets to go to the Board of County Commissioners to be adjudicated. So anything can happen.
Did you say that this is the fourth time this has been in front of this squad?
The third on this touch.
And then county commissioners, twice for them.
On the PUD and conditional
Okay.
We had it with a full application originally. It's the third time for the design review and scenery. I'm counting the other times. Probably five times.
Meredith. Subdivision.
Do not have a subdivision.
Okay, any other questions for Meredith before we go to Nate? Hey, Nathan.
Thanks, Commissioner. Nathan Stewart, Works Director. It's nice to be here. Talk to you guys. Morgan and I review projects quite a bit. Morgan has briefed me on this project and we talked a little bit about some of the issues that were going on. I think throughout the engineering review, there are a lot. There's a lot of stop and go because project was recommended for denial and its appeal. Engineering issues weren't necessarily fully vetted or addressed. So I've had a little bit of time to look at this and there's a few issues, I think. And fortunately, Corinne Graham's on on the line, too, so she might be able to provide some responses to the commission. But we've got a little bit of a stormwater connectivity issue because there's a project very similar to this off of Cron Lane that you approved previously. I think we've got a good solution to that. And I know that in talking with that developer in the past week, they want to work amicably with this applicant to make sure whatever they do there maintains the the regional drainage that's there. But there will be a small tweak that needs to be made to the stormwater design. Our biggest concern is the pathway. As it's shown right now, that the pathway, it looks to be about 12 feet, a little less than 12 feet from edge of pavement to edge of pathway. That that's that's with no road shoulder and no real shoulder for the pathway either. Granted, I understand the pathways gravel. Typical standard pathway designs are paved so that they can be maintained, hopefully extended with grant funding future. So in our engineering review, we will likely be requiring and requesting that this pathway get moved further to the east or further to the west. And that will cut into some of that landscaping area. But that that really isn't the only option if the buildings truly can't be relocated further west. And the reason is, if you don't have that that amount of space, you can see they have culverts proposed across their driveways. Those culverts need a minimum foot of cover. And even with the foot of cover, your asphalt will likely crack due to freezing thaw conditions. So hopefully we can work with their design team to get this pathway slightly moved further to the west. So what we typically find in our experience is that pathways need to be a minimum of 15 feet away from a road. Now, that that doesn't take into consideration these slopes. With a three to one slope, which is pretty steep, that's one foot of rise and three feet horizontally. You need about 16 to 17 feet to make sure you still have a two-foot gravel shoulder on that pathway to protect the asphalt of the county's road. And then also make sure that that pathway wouldn't get compromised and start eroding into into the ditch. So those are some issues that we'll have to get through. I'm optimistic that it can be done. There are solutions to be made here. But those are some of the outstanding engineering issues. Other than that, we've reviewed the stormwater system and the stormwater system looks like it's going to be more than adequate to handle. Happy to answer your questions.
Do you have an idea of what this the pathway is moved? How much is left for the landscaping?
I believe they said there's 14 feet, so that might be reduced down to 10 feet.
10 feet.
And, you know, I think one of the things we talked about was, well, all of this is tight. And so if we ever envision at some point in our future that this pathway would be maintained in the wintertime for people to use to get to school, it's going to be challenged. So more space is always better. I realize this has been through a number of iterations, so. I think from our perspective, in trying to look out for the county's interest, the taxpayers' interest that have to pay to maintain that road, making sure we've got a stable road section, separation from that pathway is the critical issue. And then the landscaping component is more of a design design review issue that Public Works Department's less worried about.
Was it not supposed to be maintained for access to and from school? Or that was not the plan originally?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. But so that pathway that was built there was built with grant dollars. They did not have nearly enough funding to do what they needed to do, and they certainly didn't have the land to do so. So they built that pathway within the current boundaries that they had. And if they were able to get any permission from the property owner, that was great. As we clearly saw this winter, that pathway was not plowed. That pathway creates some significant hazards to drivers
Yeah, a bit.
because it's not agreed. And I think, you know, it was a good it was a good effort on behalf of the Valley County Parks Department to try to get something in. And we all acknowledge that, yeah, it's probably not going to be able to be used in the wintertime. But long term, we want to be able to do that. And this is a project and a piece of property that's going to be here in perpetuity. And we have the opportunity for a development that's, you know, it's undeveloped land. And this is the exact appropriate mechanism to secure this right-of-way and get this portion of the pathway properly designed. And, you know, what we often see is that that counties and local governments end up helping to maintain that and do that plowing.
Did they skip on the materials, too, because of the fact they didn't have proper funding to put it together?
I can't I can't speak to that with with all certainty. I know I worked with Dave Binghamman and the county engineer on trying to get that project approved so they could just get something in so that people could use it, get off the road. But I think certainly for this pathway and the investment that this developer is making, we can make sure that this this pathway is going to be, you know.
So that's part of that's part of the building process, that, right?
Correct. And if you recall, that's exactly what you did on Cron Lane with Vince Beers project. So we basically, we have a precedent there where, you know, Vince was willing to put that pathway where it needed to go. It's actually partially located on his property within an easement. These roads typically should have a 12-foot utility and snow storage easement along the outside edge, which likely would be where some of the buildings are going. And that's because you have franchise utilities that need a place to go. And they're running along this roadway. And so you have this road and you have a ditch and you have a pathway. There's no place for a junction box or any kind of utility feature to serve this this subdivision or this property needs to be. So we clearly have a very tight design. I'm not suggesting it's not possible. We're all really good at what we do and we can figure out a way to try to make things and squeeze it in there. But at a minimum, that pathway is going to likely need to be moved.
It's a part of our responsibility to set up some kind of criteria for doing that? Or what kind of timeframe or deadlines and all that kind of good stuff or are we premature?
Well, I think what happens is it's the challenge with with having not a consistent engineering review and comment because, you know, these issues came to light. I don't think that they're insurmountable. And the final engine, the project doesn't have final engineering, right? So we all know in an effort to get this this application through this process, then we're entrusting the staff and the applicant to to get there. And so I just thought I'd bring that to light so that both the applicant and the commission knows that that's what staff will be doing to get them to approval. But there will need to be some work and some To get them to approval, but there will need to be some work and some, some collaboration there to make sure we can get to something that we can approve. If we get to a place where we can't get to engineering approval, then they won't be able to get a building permit. And they'll be coming back to this board and probably the county commissioners to ask for some kind of alleviation of an engineer. And we don't want that to happen.
Just as long as that's part of the deal and that's, yeah, acceptable.
Now, if it pathway pushes over to where there's the landscaping. And those trees grow up, is it going to have issues with roots?
Well, you wouldn't have, it should root so in. Up here.
It comes down. Do we need to require certain types of landscaping to avoid that damage in the near, I mean, if it's going to be paved, obviously if it's gravel, it's not.
Right. We can have, you know, our park staff look at the, the planting plan. It's a great question. And typically what we've done is we've tried to work with the applicants to. Select the best species that we feel are appropriate. Mostly to be resistant for snow storage is the biggest concern. And there are a number of species out there that can be, I mean, they're, they're going to be equally as concerned with the roots affecting their retaining wall as much as we will with the pathway. So I think. I can't speak to that. That's not my area of expertise, but I, I would not say that that's something that we feel is unachievable. I just wanted to bring to light that the pathway is going to have to be. And mostly that's due to also protect the integrity of their paved driveway approach. So their culvert has, you know, proper cover.
There's been a lot of conversation about groundwater. Nathan, I know really, I haven't seen that. We have really accurate, I mean, numbers range from six inches to three and a half feet. Condition four. Revised geotechnical report. So what happens if they have to throw in three, four feet of fill? We approve it, but now the buildings are above the road levels. Because one of the scenic design criteria is. Peeding news.
Yeah, I can't, I think maybe the applicant's engineer could provide you a better sense of what they know of that issue. I mean, I. I would like to think that they've got means and methods to control groundwater and ensure the groundwater doesn't. Doesn't cause a problem. If what, if what they're saying is they may need to raise the buildings four feet, then I think that's a factor that would be worthy of consideration, but I, I'm not sure I've heard them say that.
So conditions, how does condition for city planner and building official? How does that, maybe it's a Meredith question. We have these plans here today and then groundwater becomes an issue. So. I would feel more comfortable that, you know, condition is. You'll get to change the plan design. But I see that that's in this condition.
Yeah, I think you can, you can adapt the conditions that I've proposed here. This one was based on the applicant engineer has said as, as an engineer with a license. That they don't believe that they're going to have to raise things based on their calculations. You can include a second part of that sentence that says if any raising to finish floor elevation has to occur as a result of the groundwater in the areas. Got to come back. It's. Think that Commissioner Thompson's insight on that as also an engineer could be helpful. Like what does that play out as? But.
I wish Tom was on tonight as well, but.
He's not here tonight. I think the idea is there's a lot of things that you can do in the engineering and getting rid of water world. It's a question, how much money do you want to spend to build what you designed?
Question for you, Meredith. How does that work if the groundwater is higher than the, it's anticipated in the original study and you raise the building? What is it? How's the building configuration come out? Is it, is the floor higher than the, the actual groundwater that? That is the height of what the study said or?
I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that question. So that, that might be a, a better question for Nathan. Have you ever overseen a project with high groundwater where you had to raise an elevation?
I haven't seen one like that.
Yeah, all of Valley County.
Well, I'm from the valley, so I, you know, worry about that too much, but.
I, you know, I would really defer to the applicant's engineer. They're the experts on this project.
I think the question would be, what enforcement mechanism do we have to ensure by all said and it's not two feet higher than with the plants? I mean, is the building inspector going to measure that or how do we enforce that that's not changed?
Yeah. So John Powell and I, John Powell is the building official. He and I share an office and on projects like this where there are highly specific details. A great example will be how many times John Powell and I put our heads together over the hospital project that we're in the seventh year of. Where we have to go back to the original entitlement and sometimes look at the size of a window for the location of a wall. Turn our head this way and turn our head that way and figure out, is that where it's supposed to be in the building permit submitted design? Are the finished floor elevations in the same location? And if not, we have to dig into why not? And is that a violation of planning and zoning's entitlement? So sometimes we do find you don't even have an inch to wiggle because that was a sticking point for the planning and zoning commission. So if you want to wiggle, you gotta go back. But if there is room to wiggle, in this case, I do not believe that the finished floor elevation or the height of the buildings is going to be a place where John Powell or I agree that we can wiggle at all. If what is submitted at the time of building permit does not match what you entitle, we will have to come back, which is part of. Making sure in this discussion, we make it clear that any pursuit of entitlement where these questions still need to be answered is at the risk of the applicant. Where if they want to leave it up to question and leave it up to fate and leave it up to science later on. That, that's a risk that they take on, not us. Well, I mean, we take on the risk of having to look at it, but that's what we do all day is look at stuff.
So if a violation occurs, then who's responsible?
The applicant. And it won't be considered a violation. It just. Yeah. And then out in the field, if people build things wrong, that, that's a whole nother process. That involves sometimes unbuilding and rebuilding. And sometimes in the very, very rare case of somebody completely built a building completely wrong, then we have to come back. The planning and zoning to figure out what we do to fix it. But I think we've only done that one time in the last five years that I've been here.
The finished floor elevations are defined on civil sheet C three.
Correct.
So. And I guess the applicant feels they need some flexibility. Now would be the time to request that.
Yeah, I think, I think the consensus of the board, if it's approval, that would be. Nothing changes there. It's my thoughts and kind of getting that feel from the board as well. Was, do you have any other discussion with them as far as this, if there is a size of the berm, everything kind of seems to drop down? There be any potential of a berm? Were you got a discussion on that? If there wasn't one?
We didn't. You know, it's not a requirement within a scenic route landscaping standards that a berm be included. But that's an important feature. I think that you heard in Mr. Hatch's summary that it's going to be more like a swell. So that, that's the opposite of berm. But. If a berm is important to you, I think consider it in your deliberations and, and then it again becomes probably more of an engineering problem of. How do you store smell on top of a hill? But that's Nathan's problem and not mine.
Nathan, does the pathway have to move to the west along the whole project?
My understanding it does.
Okay, so now we've completely lost the landscape.
Well. Again, yeah, I think they said they've got fourteen feet and. Losing up to five feet of that. Hopefully not, maybe four.
Any other questions for staff at this point before we go to public comment? All right. At that, we'll go to public comment and we have Dan Goldman, he is here or.
He is on.
Online. He requested some additional time for various neighbors. And so we're going to allow him to an extended time for. Comments similar to what we did at the last meeting. So we'll give about roughly 10 minutes. And so Dan, if you'd like to, yeah?
Sure. Thank you, commissioners. And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Dan Goodman with Morrow and Fisher. We're located at Four Ogden Avenue in Nampa. And I represent Kimberly Aperson and Joe Baugh. They live at five fifteen South Sampson Trail. A lot of the, the issues that have been developing over the last. Multiple public hearings, I think, from, from our perspective, look like they, they have not been adequately addressed yet. And in fact, the discussion that the, the commissioners were just having with regard to these groundwater issues speaks to that. You know, at the last public hearing, the commission had asked the applicant. To provide an updated geotechnical report. Addressing these groundwater issues because that groundwater is so close to the surface and because we know that the foundations of these buildings and their footings. Are certainly going to interact with that groundwater. And it's clear from the commission, from the discussions of you all. We don't have the information that we need. You know, there should have been an updated geotechnical report that was requested from the commission at the last public hearing. I have not seen an updated geotechnical report and I imagine you haven't either. If there was one, perhaps the applicant could answer those questions that the commission is tossing around. You know, really, it's, it's not Meredith's responsibility. It's not Nathan's responsibility. It is ultimately the applicant's responsibility to answer those questions, especially when this commission. Pointedly puts it to the applicant to provide that additional information and they haven't done it. So that's one issue that we still haven't seen a resolution on or, or any real clarity. By the providing of more information from the applicant. Additionally, you know, there's this perimeter fencing issue. I do appreciate that, that the applicant has provided some rendering. So the fence, if I remember correctly, at the last public hearing, we didn't have that yet. And I was looking at those. It looks like there's two different fence designs in addition to the gate. And they've identified them as, you know, fence one and fence two. And from what, what I think I saw on there, it looked like fence two, and I believe this is the one that would. Run along the northern boundary of the project area. That fence, it looks like it's supposed to be eight feet tall. I know this is the, the snow storage retaining fence also. The McCall City Code is pretty clear about fencing in a zone such as this one, a, a community commercial zone. And in fact, every zone outside of an industrial zone, you're not supposed to have fencing that exceeds six feet. I don't see any exception provided in the. McCall City Code either. So we'd like to see that addressed by the commission and revisions to those. Those fencing designs, particularly the reducing that, that eight-foot height down to what would be permissible by the standards. Additionally, I have to say, and look, this is subjective and I'm basing this and my clients are basing this. Off of what the renderings look like. We don't have these materials in front of us, to be fair. But I got to say, that second fence, the one that is apparently eight feet tall, the retaining fence. To me, the, and to my clients, and I think to really, a lot of people looking at these renderings. That doesn't look like. Like natural materials or synthetic materials that are adequately imitating natural materials. Look, if this were in any other area, perhaps it, that, that issue on its own could be overlooked or ignored or forgiven. But we're dealing with a scenic route here. And so I think it's important, you know, there are other fencing designs out there. I wonder if, to what extent the applicant has explored those other designs. And in particular, and again, if there's a, a six-foot retaining wall fence that would actually. Satisfy McCall's fencing standards, that would be much better. But I'd hate to see the commission approve a project that has this blatant violation of one of the pertinent standards here. So that's another issue we've identified. You know, I, I also just want to remind the question of what the language in the McCall City Code is with regard to the fence.
He has frozen. And if you can hear us, you've froze. I'll give him a minute here to see if he can come back.
Okay, I'm back. Can you hear me okay?
No, I can hear you.
Okay. Were you able to hear me before?
You ended part of the fence discussion.
Okay, well, to wrap that up, what I was just saying is that it would be. Important, I think, that the commission sees a fence that is below, is at six feet or below as required by the McCall City Code. And I would hate to see the commission approve a project where we have such a, a blatant violation of one of the standards that needs to be imposed here for design review and scenic routes. And then the other thing I was just mentioning about the fence is just frankly, that, that second design, that, that fence to the, the retaining wall fence. You know, I'm basing this off of the renderings, but it's an ugly fence. And, you know, at the end of the day, these materials for the fencing needs to be either natural or imitating natural materials. And, and the language of the code specifically says that, and this is not just the fencing, but also the walls too. And we have these kind of monolithic walls. With, with minimal windows. Both the fencing and the walls must also not block or disrupt the visible. Or significant views or features. And they also must be compatible with the immediate surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route. So, you know, looking at these renderings, I don't see it personally. And again, even if the commission does see that they're satisfying that, they're still not satisfying that maximum height standard. Of six feet. Now, there's the setback and row issue that's been discussed quite a bit already. I don't really want to beat a dead horse, but I will just say that. You know, as, as Nathan has pointed out, that pathway needs to be moved. We don't have a design in front of us right now with that, with that pathway being moved to the west. And without that, right now, we have a plan that is not going to be able to provide adequate snow storage along both the pathway. And Sampson Road, which, you know, in the winter time, as you know. You get, you guys get a lot of snow up there, a lot more than we do down here. And, and I've certainly driven that road in the midst of winter. It gets narrow as it is. I don't think that it makes any sense to compromise on the recommendations Nathan's providing here. And furthermore. If you're going to require the applicant to mood that pathway, and we think you certainly should. Along with that, we think you need to see revised renderings that reflect that change. That's a pretty significant change to the front of these buildings and how, how all of this is going to look along Sampson. Again, obviously that's a, that's a scenic route. And so the, the design of how this is ultimately go, look is of utmost importance. And so if they're going to have to make such a significant change, moving that pathway to the west several feet. And the area that that pathway is going to move into is where the landscaping is, which is designed to. Mitigate the negative features of this building on a lot, of these buildings along a scenic route. I think it's really important that the commission requires the applicant to provide new renderings, updated renderings that comply. And align with what Nathan is recommending, as well as give the commission that way, a better sense of what this is actually going to look like. Because the renderings that are in front of you now just don't take that into account. So you're going to be basing your decision right today off of incomplete information. And off of renderings that just don't actually reflect what this is actually going to look like. And finally, and, and, and you know, I'll just mention this briefly. Again, I don't want to beat a dead horse with this. I did mention this at the last public hearing, but really, you know, of. The row issue and the setback issues, a lot of this gets typically sussed out in the preliminary plat. Preliminary plat application procedures, and that's not happening here. And I'd mentioned before, look, the applicant doesn't have to submit a preliminary plat application at this point, but it would make a lot of sense. To do so, so that all of these issues can be figured out before any building starts happening. It's not too late for the commissioner to require a preliminary plat application from the applicant, especially considering that we know. That these storage units, if they get built, will, will be condominiumized. And finally, I'll leave you with this. On that note, you know, the, and the staff report mentions this too. This was brought up at the last public hearing. There's supposed to be a lease agreement. That's been provided to the commission. It's my understanding there has been no lease agreement provided. We also mentioned last time and I'll reiterate it again, that. You know, given that these storage units are going to be condos. We'd really like to see some CCNRs and/or a maintenance agreement, either both or one or the other. Because we've got maintenance issues now, not only with. Because we've got maintenance issues now, not only with regard to the front of the property along Sampson and the pathways and how that's going to be managed, how the snow storage is going to be managed. But also, we've got the the irrigation issues on the on the project itself. And now that's going to be maintained, you know, that the prior, it looks like this was the stormwater storm management plan from February 28th. You know, it makes pretty clear that that stormwater is going to need maintenance. Knowing that now there's not going to be bathrooms on the property, there's not going to be any employees on the property. So how is that, you know, has it has it been addressed? How that is going to be maintained when you don't have anyone at the site? And then additionally, you know, if you're not going to have bathrooms, so our understanding that there needs to be a limitations on how long a given customer or owner of one of these storage units can be at the property. It's my understanding there's some, there's a two hour limit. And anyway, normally, those those issues are dealt with in in things like lease agreements and management agreements and frankly, CCNRs. But we just haven't seen any of those on this project. And again, that is one of the the requirements for approval here, conditions for approval, is that there be a lease agreement. We haven't seen the lease agreement. So with all of these deficiencies that I've laid out and that you all have discussed already, it's really clear to us that, you know, I know that we've had multiple public hearings here, you know, I hear what Ms. Jermaine has said about how long this this project has taken. I'm sure that's frustrating. I don't doubt that. But I'll just remind the commission that regardless of how long this project is taking to get through the the process here, that is not a factor that you should consider when you weigh whether to deny or approve these applications. That's irrelevant, frankly. And to be honest, if if a project has taken a long time and has had to come up against denials and has had to go through appeals, then maybe there's a reason for it. And if anything, I think that adds to why you should consider the deficiencies in this project with real scrutiny and be very careful about approving it. Ultimately, at this point, it's clear there's not enough information for the commission. We think you should either continue this hearing again until you get what you asked at the last public hearing to be supplied to you from the applicant, or you just deny this and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will go, anybody that's online or on the phone wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're muted, you may need to hit start, fix, and phone. So again, is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? Nobody can hear that? All right. All right. Is there anybody here in the audience that wish to comment regarding this application?
Hi, my name is Joe Baugh. I live at 415 South Sampson Trail. That is directly across from 450 South Sampson Trail. And I I have heard all this. I've made comments before. Much of this is old stuff. And why is it old stuff? Here, three, four meetings into into this, I don't know. It should have been, much of this should have been developed before now. I'd like to take some some little what was been said by by the attorney there, you know, that the county approved this and all this sort of stuff and we can't go in. I I think Meredith did a good example that you don't need to to follow that direction. But I would like to mention that the county also denied this. They out flat denied it. And it wasn't until there was a special intervention that they decided it was different. And to me, I haven't seen anything from the county which indicates anything different. Everybody talks about, oh, there's no economic impact on the people here. Nobody has presented any information to indicate whether there is an impact. If you were to live there, would you think there'd be an impact? Would your your property values go down? We asked that question to Mr. Akannis when he had the the meeting. He said, would you like to have this kind of facility across from you? He said, I don't know. Yes, you did. You said that.
I can get in the back and forth.
Yeah, he said, say that. He I said, a a storage facility across from you. That was his answer. I I think there needs to be, in future situations, some way to actually assess the damage that these people are doing to the community to make their money. Anybody can look at that and say, this facility has no precedence on that whole street. There is nothing even remotely like it. It is not something that fits the community, period. It will affect the community. It will affect our property values. It will affect our daily living. It will affect the 500 people to go back and forth on that road every day from the traffic, from the view, all of that. It will affect the people that use the pathway. When you do this, they send out 300 feet. When you want to do these kind of projects, you should look at the community because the community is affected. There's 500 people, like I say, that drive up there. They didn't get the, they didn't get all these forms. That word didn't get out. So you don't have the input from most of the public that actually is involved. And I think the process is inherently flawed in that respect. And and we don't have anything to actually say. They can say, oh, this isn't going to affect the community. But they haven't got a darn thing to prove it. Not one thing. They don't present any information about that. They just say, oh, it is doesn't going to happen. And they convinced the county to say that. But the county at first said differently. Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Scott Tunnel. I live at 1569 Warren Wagon Road. I know most of the commissioners because I spent nine years on planning and zoning. And a lot of long nights, but I've never in in the nine years that I was here, have I ever, did I ever see someone have to go through eight of these hearings? And I commend the the developer for for trying at best to to provide the information that's requested. And the information that I read through showed a number of of times that they did specifically reply with action and they they changed the plans, added landscaping. And I was surprised to hear about the pathway needing to be moved. And so what we used to do is we we had to be reminded, especially when it was in a design review scenic route situation. But that's what we're supposed to be here talking about. And tonight, the job is to focus on the design review elements and the scenic route, not the engineering requirements and the distance for vehicles to be coming in and out. What we used to do, we did it a number of times, is if we approved or if we asked for someone to come back, we made it very specific what it is they need to do for the next hearing. And I I don't know that that's been done adequately. But it appears to me, with everything that I've read, looking at the design and reviewing the the project from a code standpoint and everything that I learned in my nine years on planning and zoning, I would I would vote yes on this. I would vote to approve it. And I hope you guys do. I would, if you have concerns, I remember many times when we said conditioned upon this being provided and that being provided. And if those are reasonable reasonable conditions that the applicant actually can answer, they won't get a, they can spend all the money they want to build this if they don't provide those kinds of of responses or answers to your responses, they're not going to get their their occupancy permit. I I don't think that this this group of developers is is going to do anything but provide you information when they know that, when they know what it is you want. So again, I'd recommend approval of this, this, and I'd recommend it tonight. Thank you.
Kim Apperson, 415 South Sampson Trail. Thanks. I know our attorney spoke for us. Thank you for allowing me to speak as well. I also was on the planning and zoning commission for nine years and the set and Commissioner Lyons for two years of that. And I guess I'd take a different tact than than the other past commissioner. I don't remember ever seeing a a an application come forth to the commission where the applicant made so was resistant so many times to making meaningful changes to an application and to a site plan as they were asked to. And quite frankly, I never saw one that came back remanded from the county commission in this in this way. Because you were looking at an entire application initially, you denied it, denied scenic route and and design review and recommended the rest of it for denial. So you didn't take a good look at at the engineering and at the site plan and at the water table because it didn't fit. Said, no, it just doesn't work here. And you didn't take a deep dive into it. There was no reason to. But then just part of it comes back to you. And that's a tough situation. You have to look at this just as a design review and scenic route review, but you can't deny this. You don't have to look at what the county thinks will work and should work. And it's unfortunate that you don't have the entire application in front of you. But we always insisted on CCNRs. We insisted on those types of plans being submitted. So we knew how a piece of property would operate, how this this development would operate ultimately. I believe we always insist on those things. This site plan, it is tight. It's in a, it's in a very iffy location. And in those situations, you need to demand for more details. Now that the the path has to be moved to the west, we're losing what minimal vegetation they had in the first place, vegetation that was shoved right up against buildings. Big trees aren't going to grow there. They had ten Ingleman sprouts right next to a building. If they, they're just not going to thrive in those positions. I really hope that you have the, ask the city arborist to to take a good, close look at this landscaping plan and whether it really will function, whether those trees will live or die. Relying on such an iffy application to just be decided with staff at the engineering level, I think is putting too much onus, too much responsibility onto staff and away from your overview because while I was on planning zoning, I saw things get done wrong. I saw trees get slipped off that shouldn't have been slipped off before people built, before they came in for their application. Or even afterwards. You can't undo that. And so while you have control, you need to keep that control to make sure that if this thing goes forth, that doesn't belong here, and you know it doesn't belong here, you've said that twice. If you're going to go ahead and try to approve it, you need to make sure it's right. So please, hold your feet to the fire. Make sure it's done right. Thanks.
I'm Scott Harris. I live at 86 Ilka Lane in McCall. I have several concerns. I'll speak to incompatibility and groundwater. This commission has twice denied this application, only to have it overturned by Valley County who who disavowed any obligation to pay any attention to their own planning and zoning that they are in agreement with you in formulating that original plan. Groundwater has been represented as being between 3.3 and 6.6 feet based on reported measurements taken as pits were dug June 15th, 1920 or 2023. Measurements taken moving forward from September 9th of 2023 to July 2nd found levels between four inches and two feet in three pits running through the heart of the project for four straight months. That includes the western edge of Building 2, where the engineer has testified they're going to actually cut that area down and move the ground over to fill on the western edge. USDA has previously, or I I've previously presented data from the USDA for annual moisture accumulation in McCall over the past 10 years, which showed levels well below the median during the 2023 and 2024 monitoring years. We must assume higher levels would occur during years of greater accumulation. A groundwater level of four inches means several feet of compacted fill would be needed in order to for footing depth to meet code requirements, as Commissioner Petty also was questioning. This would raise the building heights considerably above those depicted in spite of the engineering comments that you heard earlier. It's inevitable that they're going to have to put fill in there. These buildings already appear looming and ominous in the drawings depicted in the view from South Sampson Trail Scenic Route, even without this inevitably necessary added height. The narrow strip of ground between the pedestrian pathway and the buildings will not be sufficient to support the exuberant landscaping depicted. And we would be left looking at essentially bare buildings, especially if the path is moved over, as was discussed. The large walls covered coupled with piled salted snow plowed from Sampson Trail would make growth of the code specified conifers impossible, as we already see from death of trees and vegetation along our roadways. The plans for septic or vaulted toilets seem to have been scrapped, perhaps just for now. Toilet vaults cannot be placed in ground saturated with groundwater as the vaults can leak and will float. Thus, vaulted toilets would need to be installed above existing ground level to avoid groundwater. Now, there's no plan apparently to put in vaulted toilets, but how are people going to spend time at this site if there isn't a toilet? The project remains completely incompatible, as you previously deemed. The drawings only serve to underscore that requirement. And I'd like to add that the setback is actually 10 feet from the pathway. If you look at the overhang on Building 2, it's specified on the plat as 10 feet, not 14 feet. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody else or any audience that wish to comment? Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment? Right, with that, we will end the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Abby Jermaine, I want to take some of these comments in reverse order. Frankly, with all due respect to Mr. Goodman, he is factually incorrect on the requests by the commission and staff. He has mentioned that a geotechnical report was requested by this commission at this time. That is inaccurate. A geotechnical report, a revised geotechnical report was discussed in the context of a condition of approval. If you look at the staff report provided by Meredith, it does include a condition of approval that anticipates a revised geotechnical report before approval of the building permit. The reason for that is because the city engineer Morgan had discussed a potential need for that as she continued discussions with the neighboring properties and the stormwater issues. So that is inaccurate that that was a request made by staff prior to this deliberation and consideration. The applicant, of course, is more than happy to abide by those proposed conditions of approval, including a revised geotechnical report if needed. There was also a comment by the public related to the fact that this project is inappropriate for this location. That issue has been decided by the Board of County Commissioners. The project has been approved as it relates to a self-storage facility. I think Commissioner Petty made a very astute comment and question related to what happens to this application if it is denied. If this application is denied, it will go to the county commissioners on appeal. The county commissioners have already found that this project is appropriate for this facility. The only thing left that they will decide is the aesthetic and design aspects of this. They had asked this, these applications to come back to the commission for your input on the design aspects. Again, if the application is denied, it will go to the Board of County Commissioners. And I would submit to you that they will approve the design review and the scenic route applications based on the fact that they have already met and made those findings as it relates to the CUP and the PUD. By having this commission approve this application with conditions, that leaves this board in the opportunity and in the position to see what conditions you want on this this property. So from a control aspect, which I heard from the public, they want this commission to have control of this project. The best way to do that is with an approval and conditions um, of approval on this application. I want to address um, the comments on the pathway. I think that, to be honest, this is kind of the first time we're hearing about this new movement. Certainly understand that it it's probably based on Nathan's um, new review of this. What I will say is the applicant will work with the city. We will do what's necessary to ensure that the pathway is safe. I would also note for the commission, the pathway has already been moved. It has already been part of this design is actually moving the pathway a bit as well. So we had already anticipated it being adjusted, and we certainly can continue to work with the city on this. Related to that, there has been a lot of conversation about what needs to be done now and what needs to be done before building approval and engineering approval. As you all know, there is a fine balance between what the applicants and the developers will do at this stage and what they will do prior to building and engineering approval. And the reason for that, as you all know, is because of cost and resources. If the project is not going to be approved, the applicants cannot continue to revise aspects of the site, provide more reports. At a certain point, they need to know that they have land entitlement to go forward with this project. We absolutely understand that if issues change related to the groundwater, we will have to accommodate that. If that means raising elevations, that would be a deviation from the current site plan. We would have to come back to the commission. We understand that. At this point, we need approval to move forward so that we know that we can actually begin on this project and finalize those aspects with staff and the city engineer. Um, I just want to briefly touch on another comment made related to the groundwater and the fact that there hasn't been sufficient information on this. There is sufficient information. We have provided the information we have. And the civil engineer Corinne Graham, who's on this project, has provided an a professional opinion that at this point, there does not need to be a raise in elevations in order to avoid groundwater. I I I think it's just important to know that that is the information that we have. That is what we have received from the civil engineer. Again, if that changes, we will have to come back to the commission. We understand that. Just briefly on the right of way dedication, we are aware of that. We know that that's something um, that we need to do. It was something that was brought up in the CUP and the PUD aspects as well. So we are certainly aware of that and um, will certainly uh, go through the process of dedicating that right of way um, when needed. I, are there any other questions that the commission has for me? I want to make sure that you also have the opportunity to ask questions of Jeff or or Corinne, but I I do encourage the commission to make a decision on this application today. As Meredith already mentioned, there really isn't much more information we can provide at this stage. We certainly will provide all information that's required for the building permit and the engineering approvals as conditions of approval of this application, but at this stage, there isn't much more that we can really provide.
Questions? For the applicant?
I have a, I have a question, but I was waiting for deliberation to talk about it. It was more of a suggestion. But I'm not sure if this is the right time or if I should wait.
We have to do it both.
It is dealing with um, the frontage of that one building in particular. So I don't know.
Well, because just in case we need to have more input back and forth from staff, we should probably do it at this point, and we can always do it again if we need to.
Okay. So uh, so the, so I was asking you a question about the swell that's in front of the building and frankly, I I like what you, what the new renderings are because it can really tell what's happening through that street uh, in the right of way and in the frontage property. But um, with a swell right in front of the building there, thoughts come on the south side of the um, building number two. You have there, there's a retaining wall, and so you have your positive drainage slope away from the building, and then you have a drain pile. Instead of creating a swampy area there that it's hard to contain, and you are having to have a culvert underneath the roadway there. Why not continue that burned area with the retaining wall that's coming up along the building? And then you can have your vegetation creates positive drainage away from the building, but also allows vegetation, also allows for height that's not as as tall or abrupt along the right of way. Might even be able to get rid of that culvert, um, depending on how your rating flows that way. So that was just a thought suggestion. I know that there's differences within how that building is set up. There's some sections that are set back in, whatnot. And so that can may or may not create a problem as far as running your drain pile through there, but um, just as a thought. Anyway, that was my
If you want to respond or if you're way too responded in.
Corinne, are you online? Do you have any comments related to that?
I'm here. The, so the retaining wall could be extended maybe a couple of feet above uh, the current proposed level, and that would allow for the dirt to be graded up against that wall um, and create a sloped effect from the building to the pathway, um, which would obscure, like you're saying, obscure a little bit more of the building. Um, I don't think we want to go too high on that retaining wall just because if we build the earth up too much against the building, then we're getting really close to our ease height, and that's going to provide, I think, a security problem. Where someone might have the potential to climb up onto the roof of that building. So we we probably want to keep that at about two feet or less if possible.
Commissioner Thompson, does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah. And and it wasn't, it's not about creating a big burn that's sloping out, but just utilizing the ground that's there, creating your five percent slope or whatever away from positive drainage from the building and and figuring out your drainage.
That's not as they intend.
And I I, just for the record, I believe that the applicant would be amenable to any kind of revision to the condition of approval to accommodate exploring that extension of the retaining wall.
Still your intention to sell these as condos?
I believe at this point that will be the intent. Again, this, at a certain point, this is a a cost mitigation situation where we don't intend to pursue a preliminary plat um, and condominiumizing these units if we don't get the approvals on the SRDR. So we certainly understand that that's something we have to do if we intend to individually sell them. But at this point, again, that is something typically we see during the construction phase is to then go through the subdivision and the preliminary plat aspect.
Do you believe that? You believe this design um, was qualified for subdivision?
Yes.
The way it is?
Yes.
I don't believe that staff agrees with me.
Well. And again, Commissioner Petty, I I would say that we will certainly do what is needed at that at that stage if if we decide to go that route.
You can't unbuilt a building. I'm sorry.
Understood.
Did we have any CCNRs for that? I don't remember. Was there some in there in some of the previous packages?
No, there are no CCNRs or lease agreement at this point. CCNRs are a mechanism to be included in a plat, so the language in your recommended conditions of approval would be to provide staff a lease agreement um, before issuance of a building permit to review to ensure that it meets um, mostly the requirements or the alleviation of requiring a bathroom for the style of development. But you could request that that include any maintenance infrastructure fencing or stormwater as well. But you have not as yet requested to see that at a meeting um, for yourselves at this point. And it it's pretty abnormal for you guys to review those types of agreements, but good question.
And Mr. Chairman, we do, we certainly do understand that that requirement of the lease and or CCNRs is a condition of approval, and and we would certainly um, be prepared to do that at that point.
Is there requirements that we can have as far as certain business or lack of business or certain business uses not allowed?
Yeah, I think working um, with the applicant and the building official related to the building code language will be important. For example, um, very clear violations or or things that you want to see prohibited within that lease agreement would be um, like mechanicking, for example, because that'll result in people staying longer than the approximately two hour limit. Or like contractors offices out of storage units is something that we see really often um, at storage facilities in the community. So no office related uses pretty much exclusively personal storage without any continuous or longer than two hour stays or recreation, no Pelotons in the garage. I don't know how detailed we want to get.
Yeah, well, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note too, from the applicant's perspective, we we don't want any other uses there. That's why we intend to ensure that there are CCNRs. And also, we are bound by the use that's been granted in the CUP, which is strictly self-storage. So we understand both of those constraints and certainly want to help enforce those.
It becomes a condominium development. How do you police that?
It would, it would still be the CCNRs, and there would be a management.
CCNRs that have been generated yet, so we don't have any idea what we're talking about here.
We don't have that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not that application.
Yeah, well, it's, it doesn't need to be generated at this point in time, right?
Yes.
That's why it hasn't happened.
Yes.
Okay.
And the or is this agreement. So applicants are always able to, and it it'll be a requirement for this to make any sense for there to be an enforcement mechanism, because I'm not going to be that enforcement mechanism. I would like, for example, people to get fined if they violate their lease agreement or other mechanisms that dissuade users from doing things.
Hard case, Meredith.
I know. She's got a lot to do. Appreciate your confidence.
So is the intent of an eight foot perimeter fence or just eight foot where the snow fence would be on the north side?
Chairman Lyons, as uh, explained at our last public hearing, we were requested to calculate that fence at eight feet. Our intent would just be to have the fence at six feet.
The whole way.
And for Commissioner Petty, uh, we did do some research since it's not specifically stated in McCall City Code, Boise City Code for a class one, class two, and class three tree, they allow that on their frontage in an eight to ten foot landscape buffer. Mr. Thomas Thompson, if I may, in regards to your landscaping berm, if that's the, you know, the desire of the commission, it would reflect what was approved with Boydston. So it, you know, conveys some commonality of these uses along the scenic byway. That's now a scenic byway as well. So I think that that's a complimentary request that we can accommodate.
For the record, Boydston is no longer a scenic byway. I think they had more particular, specific requests on landscaping that were not within that code. And our landscaping requirement requires survival. That's as specific as it gets.
All right. Mr. There's any other questions for the applicant or staff? Wonder if we should do some discussion prior to closing the public hearing, just in case we do come up with some questions, so we don't have to reopen it. So I think we will start discussion without closing the public comment at this point. Just in case.
You have Bill Nichols instead of Bill Punkinney if you're looking for a bill, Commissioner Thompson. You're just.
And I am?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the 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 screens, so I if there are specific questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Bill, do you have any comments based on the discussion we've had so far and the information we've received so far?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think is primarily just to go through the criteria. Uh, make sure that you've got all of the information that you think you need in order to make a decision and then walk through that information and the criteria.
Okay, thank you. So missionaries thoughts? Oh, we wanted to try to go through the criteria again, or before we get there, is any other thoughts on items, specific items?
I think, Chairman, if I can contribute a couple, currently you do not have a condition um, requesting like a revised fencing plan be submitted in full compliance with McCall City Code um, section, Title Three, Section Eight. So if if you wanted us to be able to verify one more time um, that it is compliant with the code, um, I would recommend adding a condition of approval to request a code compliant fencing plan prior to issuance of a building permit. I think that that was the only one. I also don't have a condition relating to um, a revised landscape plan to be compliant and include the the shifting of the pathway. So you would want to add an additional condition of approval to cover compliant landscape in combination with migration of the pathway to the west.
Meredith? As a consideration, we may also want a condition on there that the landscaping plan be reviewed by the arborist for the city.
You could request that as well, related to.
That would still be done anyway, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
As a condition.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wonder.
I'm just, we're up to thirteen conditions of approval now. It just seems to me with that many conditions of approval, we either don't have the information we need or the plan just doesn't fit. I mean, we've seen this four times now. But we still don't have this stuff tied down.
Do you have letters that have in the, in the packet here from people that are opposed to it? How many do you have? I haven't gone through all of them and had a chance to read them. How many are opposed to it? How many are for it or what's the ratio there?
Over the course of time, it looks like you've got about twenty opposed, but it's a continuous about five or six people um, in similar positions. And those are within opposition. And then I believe we had two in support who are also the same person.
So all opposed are two, you did two and twenty or?
Two people and five people with multiple letters.
Oh, okay. I see what you're talking about. Well, a lot of these letters address a lot of things that we've discussed here today, too.
Yeah, so a lot of.
So they know what belongs to the project and they and and they have a reason to be for it or against it, and a very strong reason to be for it, yes, too.
So a lot of the things that have been cited in um, most of those comments and opposition have been related to stormwater, groundwater as well as aesthetic compatibility reasons. Um, I think that there's been robust discussion to an abnormal level on this application relating to engineering components. Um, and all of the licensed engineers have put statements into the world that there is confidence that this can work. I don't get to make that statement because I am not a licensed engineer. But I'm supposed to trust my engineers, so I do so when it comes to aesthetics, landscaping, compatibility with the neighborhood, et cetera. That's what this board, as well as my guidance, is is meant to walk through within the design review and scenic route code guidelines that we can go over once you reach deliberations on this staff report. As well as the application as a whole. Um, but I I think there's a lot of those gut instincts or the things based on your experience relating to um, compatibility with the future desired character of the scenic route, et cetera. That that it's your role to really walk through and cite evidence within the application as to your reasoning for whether or not they are met. Sometimes it's it's easy to just say, yep, that's compatible. And sometimes you have to, like we learned in. And sometimes you have to, like we learned in our training exercise earlier in March, walk through one by one and poke the thing in the application that tells you what you feel. And I I think on the aesthetic and the compatibility and the what is the desired future state of the scenic route, those are the spaces where you'll need to point to something within this application that that guides your decision making to really get there. I I don't know that I can give you or the any of the engineers involved in this situation can give you a health, safety, or general welfare problem to hang your hat on, because I I don't think they've brought that up at this time. And Nathan, please correct me if I missed one.
Any other thoughts from you, Nathan? Were you already any of the different comments afterward?
No, I we're always reluctant when we bring up issues at the bottom of the ninth inning. And I think that's kind of what what we're seeing here on the pathway. It it has some impacts on how things may appear from the roadway. But, you know, that's where the creativity of landscape architects comes in. Now, there's over twenty seven feet of separation from the pathway on the north end. And I don't know what opportunities around that south end, but, you know, I think we all want to try to make this project look and feel and function as best as possible. So if there are some accommodations we could make even on the pathway with if that's critical to make sure we have the trees preserved, then, you know, we can even look at that. We can't go less than eight feet. But, you know, we we've seen accommodations where there's an old growth tree and we decided we wanted to narrow the pathway but to to preserve it. So I think all options are on the table there. But and and what's really cool is as we look closer at the stormwater design, you know, I don't think the design engineer really had a lot of the information for the the storage units on Cron Lane and very quickly over the last week, we were able to come up with a solution there. So to Meredith's point, I think, do we feel that this can work? We do. We can, if we make it work.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions or thoughts before we go into full deliberation? Okay, with that, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Any votes? Okay, right. But we do know, we need to have those items, if we want to go through those items that we had done before and see if anything has been changed, some of the modifications we received.
I think it's helpful for Meredith if we just go down design review criteria.
Not just helpful, but required. A, A, the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Again, as a reminder, you have comprehensive plan excerpts within your staff report. If you need me to go over them at this time, I can, as they have been factually presented to you already. The question is, is the project in general conformance with the comprehensive plan?
It is located in.
In its own. In the commercial area. Yeah, so. Be probably on that. Yeah.
B, does the project jeopardize health, safety, or general welfare of the public?
I think we had some discussion on that. You got a little bit potential with that driveway, but I mean, that's.
I have concerns about safety.
What about the pathway? Was it what happens there is going to be an issue that's kind of touched on that, I think, how they move it or what they decide to do. But.
Go ahead.
I may be off base on that, but it sounds to me like there wasn't a clear direction about how they're going to handle the pathway and how close it's going to be and how much wider it is in certain areas and all sort of kind of stuff. So maybe that should be tacked down a little bit more to answer that particular last statement you made, Meredith. So I don't know. That's what I only thought about that.
Dave, what is your main concerns on that, public safety point?
I'm concerned about the size of rigs that will be driving down a narrow two lane road that gets a substantial amount of snow. I'm concerned about the the pathway for kids going back and forth to school.
That's my concern today.
And I just I'm not an engineer, but I can't wrap my head around how a forty foot, fifty foot rig is going to get in there without blocking the traffic.
So is that a met or not met?
I I'm okay with that. I feel comfortable with that, but that's.
Yeah, I think there's going to be limited time when that length of a rig is going to that'll get around, so I can, yeah. When I think the pathway would be safe, if they're moving it farther from, I've got other issues based on that, but as far as safety, I think moving it farther from the road is a bit safer. Let's see if the road's getting plowed. Watch out for that pile of snow coming flying at you.
But I'm mostly concerned about the if you just walk out and get on the pathway, not so much the size of vehicle. I think that there will be a lot enough room there, but.
I think the pathway is going to be, let's say, over farther. And you're still going to have a minimum width of it. It's not super narrow and we don't have any real big trees there. It's going to go around, so.
Yeah.
That is just another areas. Now, we may have other discussions when it comes to the landscaping and berm, or if there is a berm or how that landscaping is going to affect and be able to survive or affect the pathway, but I think that's a different part.
Respect how many conditions of approval we're going to need to get this done.
Yes. No possible concern there?
What if there is a concern, what if we just register here now and and proceed on to the next one, or how how's that go?
Yeah, so I think what I'm trying to do, and Bill Nichols, please weigh in here, since this is the first time we're doing this after the planning and zoning's training on March sixth. I'm taking down the input of each commissioner and whether they feel there is a resolution within the application and conditions of approval and what general concerns may remain. And then continuing on to determine where the consensus of the full commission is, is that the instruction, Bill?
So Meredith, Commissioner, the you go through each criteria and you talk about what information you've received and whether that information leads you to believe the criteria has been satisfied or not. And if not, what specific information did you receive that leads you to the conclusion that it is not met? So you're going to have to articulate on one of these, whether you think it's met, if it's not met, why doesn't it need it? And so that we can prepare findings and conclusions so that you have that written decision. It's an inexact science. It's just a matter of going through what information you have, talking about it, does it satisfy this in your mind or not?
So what I'm hearing is that based on the indication and the request that the pathway be moved to the west, some commissioners feel as though pedestrian safety will be better protected. Question mark.
I'd say so.
And Commissioner Petty?
The, it's not so much this safety of traffic on Sampson that I'm concerned about is traffic going in and out of. But I'm not sure to Bill's point that I can give you a specific.
So Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Petty, members of the commission, the traffic issue really goes to the the CUP criteria that the county has already stated what they are. You can get to design with regard to the ingress and egress from the site. But the traffic on on Sampson Trail, I don't think is appropriate for this design review scenic route review application.
Thanks, Bill. I think in that case, it would probably be, can't address that on that, so.
Okay.
Let's see, that would be an issue other than pathway, so let's see.
Okay. The criteria C is the project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in section three point one six point oh one of this chapter. So that's the requirement that things in the commercial zone achieve design review, as well as the requirement that things on the scenic route achieve.
And we're going through that, so.
We're going through that right now.
See about that. And then, yeah.
A, he says the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large.
And substantial. I I think without any question, it will have an impact on the neighborhood, the scenic route adjacent properties. Well, you've been in town a lot longer than I have.
Well, I mean, I do see with that span expansive building in that high along the road, it just doesn't look like a scenic route. In my opinion. And I know we can't go back on new road plan. If the buildings were turned the other way and just had some ends to them and not the full length would be less impactful, I think. But that is a long ways of very tall building. It's not even like this, it's, I can't remember what the height is, but it's higher than just a normal storage. It's extra high.
But I think we brought that up in the earliest meetings and the developers certainly could have made a decision to turn buildings if they were at all concerned about complying with CPG.
Yeah, fortunately, we can't do that here, but.
We have this one.
I I do have a hard time with that being looking like it's in a scenic ground. Something in scenic ground. I know we've talked with other areas and I believe turned down other buildings and a similar you know, walls. Being that, I could see that would have an impact potentially of especially the neighbors across the street. Hard to get a good feel of what it would be for the neighbors to the north, maybe not quite as much. I think this is a little bit lower than they are, but still be up there, but so I I do have a concern that would be that's in within the scene graph, because if it, we have that now and it continues on, it's approved, then you're going to potentially see it both sides of the road down. Who knows however long or the next lot down, and you're going to have this whole solid wall of building with an occasional opening here instead of a lot more openness. And I think the scenic routes concept, my idea is having more openness, especially along the road. They're going to be in the road looking. I know it's been discussed along the highway. We don't want it to have to look like nothing, buildings coming into town. Same thing with the scenic route here. I mean, I just have a hard time with that big, big wall right there, with that length of a wall.
To Bill's point, you know, we get to decide, we get to make a decision. Valley County Commissioners used to override that, and that's their decision, and we shouldn't have to be afraid that we're going to get overruled no matter what. So so that's a no then?
To me, and what are your thoughts?
I agree with you, Robert.
It's hard because Cron Lane, of course, on that north, north, the the intersection of Cron and Sampson Trail has all kind of that light industrial area, has that complex there. And then you go further and it has storage yards and then you've got this other development in there that's the same thing. To the to the north of that on the one side, they're used to the business there. I think it's essential now. So it's it's there. It's just augmenting what's there.
The clearly along Sampson doesn't happen. Going down Cron is not scenic ground.
Right, yeah, but but there is, I mean, looking at the renderings, so you see there's the the building there, of course, further upon Sampson then is the, I don't know, McCall Dirt Works and that whole development that's right by. No, I mean, it's on Sampson, just just below the mortuary. It's up on the hill and lots of comics boxes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Everything that. So I don't know. I mean, it's, I I see the site too and it's I would never build a house there because of the the issue with groundwater, but for a self-storage, which is a slalom grain, that stuff, you could probably build something and that's what they're doing. So it it's it's feasible to utilize that piece of ground for that purpose. There are other purposes I wouldn't use it for, so. I don't know, I I'm not opposed to it. I don't, I don't. I I think it would be okay. I agree with you. I would, this whole time I've been, would have loved to have seen buildings turned sideways and there. It would have been interesting to see, because there's three buildings. And I think, well, if you calced all of that out, calculate that out, I think you might be able to do that.
Well, yeah, that's kind of my thought. I think that's still in the roadmap potentially, but we can't discuss that part here.
That's that's not our decision.
But that might, I guess, they did do some things to 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 offset, you know, the coming out two feet every so often. It's kind of expensive when it comes to building to do something like that, to create a wall that's not just one uniform thing. So there is, there was some effort there, those windows, that type of thing, to try to meet the intent not having a bare wall. So there's been work done and then there's the landscaping. So.
I think unintentionally we jumped to scenic design review instead of design review section, section D.
Yeah, so what I was trying to do is answer, does it have a significant impact on the surrounding area? In my view, it it's, it fits a little bit. I mean, yeah, you want you want a scenic area that's all residential and whatnot. But the scenic route doesn't have it all. It's has a lot of the other two and it's not an island or whatever they call those where there's development that's just all the way itself. It's isolated, I don't know, can't remember.
But I mean, or something.
But yeah, it's it's up against everything else, so.
I would imagine many of those were her grandfather long before scenic route designation.
Yes, this is fairly new. I want to say in the last, what, two to three years that it was changed, scenic route?
Don't know if I'm allowed to answer.
Well, yeah, I mean, at this point, really, it is scenic route now, so that's what we have to base it on. I know it hasn't been that long on the scenic route. So we finish up on item D, so. I have a hard time with the part being a scene within the scene graph based on that massive of the building. I do appreciate they did pick some of the wall. They looked better than just flat, but it's just the height and proximity there is and it's pretty long.
Yeah, it is long.
A decent note. I guess it's three to one now. Kind of, without any official vote, so majority is concerned there.
I'd say you're right.
All right.
E, if applicable, a subdivision design review document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of design guidelines. Okay, F, for projects in the shoreline and river environment zone, the project will not have an unreasonable and adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting or the water quality. Well done. Good job. Okay. G, for projects in the scenic route zone, the project will preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway. And yes, you must specify anything that may be redundant to a prior criteria, please.
Once again, based on the thing, I don't think it enhances amassing the lack of just a buffer period. You know, I, I appreciate that they here's some updated land re-plans. I'm not sure that, that they will work moving this sidewalk, but it'll be 20 years before that wall is filtered. I would say that's a no.
I was okay with it. And I was going to add my little bit of, and it's not really burn. It's just creating positive drainage away, building is set down in the ground. So you, you have the building or not have the building come up with your stem wall a little bit higher. Your soil is up against that and you put your drain pot in. So then that the height of the building as opposed to the street is a lot, but the look is less. You can have your your vegetation that won't be down enough. Or there can have standing water. A lot of times that's problematic. It's good for some points, but others.
Was the smoke off the building or?
Yeah. So, so you have your building here and then it just kind of comes up to it. This is your concrete stem wall sorts and just comes up to it as opposed to
The biggest问题是, it goes right, not by this building, what, right for this building.
Yeah, yeah. So your height of the building decreases essentially from the view on the street. And then, I don't know, I mean, work with vegetation, different things. And Arvins can weigh in on that for the landscaping plan. Should be far enough away.
I've never seen anything quite like that. Do you do a lot around here?
Um, I'm, I'm not really. There's some places that when you build houses in, into the hillside or something like that, which is what they're doing in this one section. Yeah.
Is that something we can, I don't know if that's something we can initially require. They would, if the appearance, I guess the building wouldn't be as high, but I don't know, but then that changes. We can't really go back to the building designs. It's not in our purview.
This has been changed yet, though. Can we require that, that they do something along those lines if we want to, or?
Well, I think that's getting into the building structure part of it, which is not within our, we have to, we have to work with the design that we're being shown. Yes.
And if you find yourself leaning towards feeling as though there can be a revision recommended that could change your mind. You need to state that, but if you do not feel that a revision could change your mind, it's not encouraged to ask people to do revisions that have no purpose. So you feel as though the, what is it? Positive drainage intervention could resolve your scenic woe's. You are welcome to state so and recommend that be explored. But if you do not feel that will change your mind, you do not have to recommend that.
Yeah, I don't know if it could be enough to know.
But of course
Storage unit in a scenic group is incongruent for me, period.
And for me, it's been done before. So I know Boyton's in the same crowd. So anyway, it's been, it's been done and, and that was a industrial area that it was buffering into the essential area. So it's not like we're setting a precedent here. I get it too. I, I know what you're saying.
I'm kind of present for this area. Like I me, Boyton was another thing, but right. I guess at this point it's Tony, I guess, who your thoughts?
Sounds like it would make a difference to me, but I really haven't seen it. I just heard about it today. So I haven't really seen what would actually look like. I think it could or could not, I don't even have an answer here. It could or could not make a difference to me, but I don't think I want to put it in there as a, as a recommendation though.
So there enough information. I mean, I don't
They don't have your official thoughts on that.
Okay, there's so. I, as it sits, I don't think it, it's on that one.
You give me your why.
The mass of the building, the proximity of the road and height. And it just is such a length and massive building that stops any potential views or openings towards that western mountains. And I don't, I mean, landscaping could buffer it to a point that I don't think it can fix it. And I still have a concern that without, and can't require that, but I mean, without the bigger berm or something that that landscaping would survive very well down in the hole. Slope, I guess, not really a hole.
Ready for the scenic route criteria?
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it just one?
Two.
Two.
Um, so the commission shall ascertain whether the proposed development improvement or use will number one, block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features.
I think from my car or people along the road or potentially even homes across the street, might, I mean, anywhere along the road, you're not going to see anything with the features to the mountains, like I said, to the west. Whatever the distance that is.
It is such a big building, you know, and it's so long. I don't think it does, it does everything with block, lots of views of the mountains to the west.
Commissioner Thompson or Petty?
I, I would say it blocks it now. And again, my concern about having to put one more feet of fill in would make it worse.
And it's 15 feet tall. So I guess I'm just really not worried about it. I'm just not worried about it. But I love to submit that change a little bit. Yeah. I don't know. I'm of the opinion it's okay.
And number two, ascertain whether the proposed development improvement or use will be compatible in terms of setback bulk, height, design, finished materials, signing and landscaping with its immediate surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route.
Read the last part of that again, would you?
Is the application compatible in terms of setback, bulk, height, design, finished materials, signing and landscaping? Is it compatible with its immediate surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route?
Pretty much same discussion as G and design review, from my you know, it doesn't match the immediate surroundings. Yeah. If you go one or two miles up the road, it might. And we have addressed so that can bulk and height and
So what are we looking for? A no on this or no, it does not match?
I am not looking for anything.
Your personal opinion.
Just trying to sift through this.
Your opinion.
Do you see what direction to go here?
But you think it, it does.
I, I think it, I think it doesn't match the immediate surroundings of the for the, almost the length of the whole building. What we, the, the like, we really up to the intersection.
Yeah, and I you say, I think the bulk of everything. The concern of the line vaping, wherever that's going to end up being, would be limited in that. Especially being pushed with the pathway. And even go into the concerns of the pathway, what could happen to that depending on landscaping. But yeah, I just, I don't see that it's compatible with. Did you get Sam's? Great, great.
Have Dave.
I, I think they did their best and I think I wouldn't, wouldn't ask for three notes, especially in my, the CPG being creeped already. What they're trying to do is and the area that they're essentially extension of is, is the commercial. There's already other things happening right next door, just to their south and whatnot. So I mean, I'm telling the other way a little bit.
That is all your criteria. So with that, you can further deliberate and arrive at a motion if you wish, or if you feel there are any any things that can be done to change your minds. Speak now or forever hold your peace.
There's any changes based on what we can and cannot address. I don't believe there's any requirements we could ask further that would alleviate the items that we the majority of us have identified that don't fit within the scene ground. Any other thoughts on that, Commissioner?
I, I have to agree with you. You're absolutely right.
And, and for me, I'd say the only other thing, not that this is, has anything to bear on this. Guess for us, we decide what's, what's the right thing to do. Of course, then it'll probably go to the, the board commissioners. So do we say, okay, doesn't really fit, but let's just approve and add what we can on it, or do we say no? And then or can commissioners will decide what they want to do. So that's, that's the other take of it. And I don't, who knows? That's, that's kind of hard, but
Yeah, it is concern and certainly potentially a risk would hope the county would see similar concepts or concerns. Obviously they've approved parts of this that we have denied in the past, but our job is to look out for the citizens of McCall and citizens within the area of impact to the best of our ability and not relying on what another commission may or may not do. We've had stuff within even city council that may go different, like different people. I would hope they would spend the time and look at it to in-depth amount that we have, if they do make any other decisions, but I think we have to base this on the information that we have and the discussions that we have and our thoughts for our community.
Ready? Since Liz isn't here. And move to continue DR twenty four dash twenty eight and SR twenty four dash eleven to the May sixth
Yes.
meeting to allow time for staff to draft findings and conclusions consistent with the commission's deliberations in denial of the subject applications based on Meredith's notes.
Mr. Chairman, the Mr. Nick, well, for the point of order, I do not believe that there's much more, as we've already mentioned, that we can do on this application. So I, I and that the, the discussion from the commission has been the same, that there's not, that there's not more to see on this application. So we do either need an approval on the commission's original.
So Mr. Commissioners, I was not able to hear Ms. Jermaine because she's not by a microphone.
We did just recommend a denial. We just made a motion to deny.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I believe the motion was to continue.
Because we have to draft findings of facts and conclusions of law. And then we approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mr. Nichols, if you could provide clarity. I typically can, a motion to continue the decision would mean that the decision is still open for deliberation. Typically you would have a motion to either approve or deny the application and, and direct staff to bring back findings of facts and conclusions of law consistent with the motion and the direction that has been provided.
So, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jermaine, Commissioners. You, the commission has the right to say, we want to look at findings and conclusions and keep the matter open until we've actually looked at them so that we can adopt them that night. I don't, I don't see anything in the code or the land use planning act that says they have to decide. And they've, they've indicated what they want those findings to say. But that decision is not final until those findings are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, I, I don't disagree that the final decision that is appealable is not final until the findings of facts and conclusions of law have been issued. However, without making a decision tonight, I believe that the public hearing would need to be continued because a decision on this matter had not been issued. I have never seen a situation where a decision is, is not made before coming back on the findings of facts and conclusions of law.
And thank you for your input, Ms. Jermaine, but I think this is the process that they've been following so that they have the findings in front of them. The matter is still open until they've voted on the findings. The public hearing, I believe, is closed. They're not going to receive any new information.
Yes, public hearing has been closed. I think based on information we have learned over the time, not just with this, but that's over the legal training and stuff that I think, and we've continued that. We've had that with all of our other applications. And I would like to see, make sure we have everything done correctly. So you'd like to go ahead and continue, Dave?
Finish.
Okay, I went to your finisher. Okay, can re, restate the movie.
You have a motion to continue the design review and scenic route review to the May sixth meeting to allow time for staff to draft the findings and conclusions consistent with the commission's deliberations for denial of the subject application based on your previous discussions of criteria.
Do you have a second on that?
I do not have a second yet.
You got one now.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yep.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
And for the record, Commissioners Rock, Milfith and Pa are absent this evening.
With that, the motion carries. I know that one is taken while we gotta try to get through the rest of these. Is anybody in the commission? Um, I know that one is taking a while. We gotta try to get through the rest of these. Is anybody in the commission need a quick break? I'm okay with moving forward, but anybody who needs a break, let's do it now. Everybody good to move forward? Everybody else been kind of waiting here for it? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the new business. We have design review twenty three oh three and shoreline twenty five oh two for one oh nine Kiki Court. Yes, we have Abby Robnett.
You have Mike and Abby online.
Our Mike, Abby online.
Chairman Lyons, Commissioners, uh, my name is Mike Robnett. Address is one zero zero two Violet Way. Um, after that last application, this one should be very short and sweet. This is a another home down at, uh, one zero nine Kiki Court. Um, along the shoreline of the Payette River. The home sits at a little over three thousand square feet of living space, forty three hundred and fifty square feet, including the garage and. And, uh. Decks and everything. It's, uh, well within the setbacks, um, well within the lot coverage, well within the, uh. Below the required height. There are currently four houses on that street. All four of them are strikingly different designs. So yes, it fits wonderfully within the neighborhood. I, we built the home on the end about two years ago, and, and this is the. The, her, the sister to the Giddens that, that reside at the end of the street currently. But yeah, pretty straightforward application. I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood and, um, love to hear any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, any questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike. It's pretty. Pretty dry, nice and similar for the area.
Oh, did they not do that? Mister Chairman, will you please open the public hearing and please take account of all the information that Mike could. Just now.
All right, um, since they have a public hearing, make a motion, we. Open the public hearing and add in all the previous comments from Mike Robnett.
Second now.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Any votes? All right, now we're officially over.
Okay. So as, uh, Mister Robnett presented and as Abigail Robnett submitted within this application, um, it is a. Fairly honestly smaller sized residence for what's been built in that area at this point already. Um, the subdivision was platted back in, oh, I think it was like two thousand nine or so. Um, so it is slowly, um, filled in. There is quite a bit of wetland within this subdivision area. That most of the neighboring residents have already navigated, so this one is fairly isolated a little bit uphill from the other dwellings. That are within the little Kiki Court area. Um, I think you might recall over the last few years, seeing some of the houses that are on this. Cul-de-sac, um, along the river as each one has come through for design review, um, other than I believe lot seven maybe. So some of the courts they mentioned within what's been presented within this design. Um, or that I did not see, uh, an architect text stamp yet, so it is a requirement for any, um. Single family residence that has a structure size over thirty five hundred square feet that an architect, um, stamped the final plan set for design. Um, however, from a perspective of looking at all of the design guidelines, the, the set that's been submitted does seem as though it will. Meet all of those different design codes, and I've seen multiple Robnett projects where, um, they do have a, an architect stamp as soon as it gets to the. Yes, we're willing to actually pay for the final version of this stage. Um, some other things that I wanted to bring to light is that there is an existing pedestrian access easement, um, through the Payette River subdivision. Um, it comes down from Kiki Court between lots one and two, and then it crosses on the, um. Waterfront side of each of those lots to eventually connect to an envisioned green belt system. Um, so we have a comment within the comprehensive plan section of your staff report that talks about what is the vision for that green belt network. Fortunately, the easement is already acquired in this case. Um, it would just be helpful if a revised landscape plan is submitted. That also acknowledges that pathway easement there, so we don't end up with some, um, rocks in the middle of the pathway, et cetera. Chairman Lyons, I see that you have a question on your face.
Say, I think it shows. Yeah, there's.
Yeah, Mike, you can correct me if I didn't see that. Um, I think I.
No, it shows, it shows the, it shows the pathway on there. I don't know that that's the actual pathway easement stated on there. Um, but yeah, that's no problem. We can, uh, we can correct that with the final documents.
Okay.
Yeah, um, because I think where I was seeing it, I was like, I don't know if that lines up in the width and the material as it's currently built. Um, there is a little. Single track over there, um, and then the width of the pathway is, uh, the easement, I believe, is ten feet or fifteen feet. So making that match to the, the platted reality, um, is definitely helpful to both the residents of the home. So that they don't get confused when there's a random person walking along an easement. Sometimes that happens and then we have to go out and clarify. I know this is in fact an easement. They may walk. Do not disturb each other, please. Um, so other than that, I did not see any challenging encroachments. Other than a small bit of, um, what appears to be lawn, um, within the fifty foot setback. But so long as that is non-fertilized, um, native plant species, it can be seeded below the fifty foot setback from the. Oh, what's the official term from a river? The ordinary high watermark is the official term on the river and then the. Not different acronym, a platform that I'll figure out later. Um, so other than those two small things relating to the architect stamp, um, and just acknowledging the pathway on the landscaping plan. As well as making sure not to fertilize that segment so that there's no runoff of nitrogen or phosphorus into the river. That would be great. Um, but other than that, it's fairly simple. Again, smaller sized for that subdivision. And I don't see any glaring issues with it. Um, I've included some commentary about the, um. Proofing type and citing types within the designer review analysis. And then other than that. You just have a different set of criteria that we will newly review, um, for the shoreline overlay. I don't know that we've ever gone. Line by line in the shoreline yet, so when you get into deliberations, you'll have new ones to think about.
Commissioners, any questions or merit? All right, Nathan.
No, Morgan and I reviewed this and it's pretty consistent with what's going on in the area. Property's got more than enough vegetative buffer to handle the runoff and driveway is mostly our biggest concern and I think it's got sufficient.
Commissioners, any questions for Nathan? All right, this is public here, so we open up the public, the comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? Again, if you're muted, you may need to hit star six. There anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
For the record, Mike Eckert, the neighbor just said, good to have you on board.
All right, um, last time, anybody online or on the phone that wished to comment? That we will close the public comment portion. Uh, Commissioners, any questions for staff or the applicant before we go into deliberation? With that, I make a motion, we close public hearing.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor? Okay, deliberations. This one seems pretty cut and dry. See, really any issues?
Nope. It's nice when it falls into all the parameters.
Yeah, conditions are pretty much standard, very simple. Looking for motion.
Review the criteria.
Oh, so.
I'm sorry.
The motion first.
We almost got it done too.
Bill, we have Punkinny now. Bill Punkinny, are they allowed to review the criteria after making a motion?
Like a motion, like a motion to approve the, the application?
Or deny? We don't know yet.
No, I think it's best to have the deliberation, like. Let's review the criteria, deliberate it, and then make the motion.
We just did that, didn't we?
Trying to speed up the.
I know.
Process. Okay, we'll hold the motion this.
Okay, criteria A of design review. The project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Why or why not?
Yes, it is. It's all the requirements.
Yeah.
Criteria B, the project does not jeopardize the health, safety or general welfare of the public. Why or why not? Why or why not?
It does not, as it fits all safety and. Public requirements.
We'll keep the. Easement in place.
Thank you. B, the project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in section three point one six of this chapter. They are participating in design review, so that.
Yes.
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 Criteria D, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large. Why or why not?
It's a small project that fits well within the lot.
And all the setbacks.
Okay. Criteria E, if applicable, a design review document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of the design guidelines. Um, it is not applicable, but, uh, Mike Eckert is the HOA president for that. HOA, and he has commented very, very quickly in general support of the application.
Okay.
And then F, for projects in the shoreline environment zone, the project will not have an unreasonable and adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting. Or the water quality. With this condition, you will see three red asterisks. Would you like to go straight to the shoreline criteria? In order to make that determination?
Hint.
Hint, hint, yes. Okay, so criteria A for the shorelines, oh, shoreline environment overlay. A, the development should not dominate the vistas of water to the extent that it has an unreasonable adverse impact. On the visual quality of its setting. Does the proposal? Interrupt the vistas to or from the water?
Does not dominate the vistas, no.
Fifty feet is a long ways away.
Sure is.
Lots of trees.
B, development should be, should be compatible in form, line, color and texture with its surroundings.
And how this is, it's, um, trees.
It looks, it looks like it does.
Yeah, it's consistent with, so there are similar homes in the area.
Yeah.
C, development should not significantly differ in scale or contrast to its surroundings to the extent that it has an unreasonable adverse. Impact on the visual quality of its settings.
As commented by the, it's actually smaller than some of the other homes, so it's going to be less of an impact.
It does, or it does not. Okay.
Okay. You have a differing opinion, Tony? Speak now forever.
I just want to make sure that I do what you were doing.
Okay. Criteria D, structures should be clustered to allow for visibility through the site of the river and avoid a wall of structures. As viewed from the water. So if you're sitting on the Payette River looking up at this neighborhood. Do you feel disturbed?
It's within the setbacks and spacing in between the buildings are already. Done.
Yeah, let me see if there's any more hiding down there. Um, there's another thing related to the opinion of the administrator and whether I feel as though, uh, visual impact assessment. Should be required in order to help you. Uh, I have not deemed that to be necessary. So you do not have a visual impact assessment. Um, and then for part B. The criteria are, does the proposed development meet all applicable requirements of this title and title nine, which is the subdivision section of this code?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Number two, the plans accurately identify the water pool, shore contours and high water marks, which in the case of the river environs. Shall mean the limits of the area of special flood.